Hammond City Council Public Hearing Agenda, August 12th, 2025, 5:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilman DiViterio?
Here.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Present.
Councilman Wells?
Here.
Councilman Leon?
Yes.
Councilman Andrews?
Present. Public hearing, item O Business Number One.
An ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances regarding alcoholic beverages and city parks. Councilman Andrews?
We've discussed this particular item in several meetings. We had some revisions made to the original item that was submitted, and I do see that all of those revisions have been made. Anyone from the public on this item? Anyone from the council having any questions or concerns?
I just want to thank you, Councilman Andrews, for being open to suggestions, and then to Andre, of course, for fixing these, some of this language and making it where we can continue to have events at the parks within the downtown development district.
Counsel, I'm Michelle Kendall, Director of the Downtown Development District. Also wanted to thank Councilman Andrews and Councilwoman Gonzalez for working together to make these revisions and looking at them. They help us and other event organizers in downtown be able to safely host those events. I just, I guess, two items for clarification with the current process. We come before the council to get permission to sell and serve. With this revision, we'll be requesting permission from the administration, I'm assuming through their waiver process, and then we would still come before the council to get an open container waiver.
Yes, that's how I understand it.
Yes.
Okay. So that is just a small change for the process, and just so that y'all are aware with other event organizers as they continue to request that. I guess, from the administration's side, to sell and serve, that would be in the current waiver process?
We don't have a lot of alcohol in the courts, so yes, as long as a lot of people want to access that. I don't think we have the licensing support.
Okay. Okay. So we just, we fill out that waiver form that's on the city's website in order to request permission from administration?
Correct.
Okay. Well, that's the only items that I just wanted to get clarification on, and once again, just want to say thank you to both the administration and the council for working on this.
Thank you, Michelle.
Anyone else? O Business Number Two.
An ordinance to remove unused outdated definitions from the city's Unified Development Code, the UDC. The Planning and Zoning Commission hearing no opposition recommends adoption four to zero. Frankie Legault, argue.
Legault, that's correct. This is one that we talked about previously. Again, this is removing about eighteen pages' worth of definitions that appear in our UDC, our Unified Development Code, that aren't actually addressed anywhere in the code. This is an effort to clean up those areas of the UDC where we have redundancy or we have definitions, again, that aren't used anywhere else. Our city planner Frankie is here if there are any questions from the council or the public.
Thank you. Ms. Frankie, I want to thank you, Ms. Frankie. I've met with Ms. Frankie two times on this outdated and unused words that they have definitions. So we met two times, and so now I'd just like to say thank you that I have a better understanding, and thank you for coming to the council meeting. That's it with me on that. So I feel much better hearing from you, and you giving me an understanding of what's going on with those definitions. So thank you a lot.
Anyone else? Anyone else from the public? Thank you, Ms. Frankie. O Business Number Three.
An ordinance ordering and calling a special election to be held in the city of Hammond, state of Louisiana to authorize the renewal of a special tax therein, making application to the State Board Commission and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Charles Barsha.
This is in reference to something that was introduced a few council meetings back. One of our millages, our Millage for Public Works, which is what helps to fund our streets and our water and sewer systems and drainage systems, that millage is up for renewal. We're asking the council to approve this ordinance, which would allow us to bring it before the residents of Hammond for a vote, to be renewed in November.
Anyone from the public on this line item? Any questions or concerns from anyone from the council?
Yes. Explain it to me again, Charles.
This is to call an election to renew our Public Works Millage. That is about to expire. It'll expire at the end of this year. That won't affect our tax revenues for the year, but if it's not renewed, we would not be able to collect that millage revenue for 2026. So these millages, when they're approved by the voters, they're approved for a certain amount of time. When that time period elapses, we come back to the council, ask the council to allow us to bring it back to the voters for a vote. If they vote for it, it will be renewed. If they vote against it, it will not be.
So if it don't be renewed, what effect will it have on us?
This would eliminate the Public Works Millage, which would reduce some of the city's revenue.
Why don't you give a dollar amount there, Chuck?
I believe the amount's around $500,000.
It says $596,000 in the document. Sorry, I thought you would have had it in.
Yeah, see, y'all just cut me off, so I pretty much see how we're gonna do tonight, because I wasn't finished. I was trying to let Charles finish talking. So now, let's start all over again, Charles. Now, explain this to me again, please.
This is an ordinance that, if passed by the council, would allow us, the city, to put out for a public vote, an election, in November, the renewal of our Public Works Millage. That millage is set to expire at the end of the calendar year. Having an election in November would allow the residents of Hammond to vote on whether to renew that millage or to allow it to expire. It generates around $596,000 in revenue over the course of the year for the city, so if this was not renewed, that would be $596,000 less in revenue that we would see in the next calendar year, in 2026.
Okay, thank you. Now, just what I want to add on to, I want to add on to, if we sit here and start, when people building houses, apartments, or anything, we sit there and add on to, when they tap into the city service, because the amount of money we charge, we're not charging enough money. And every time they build something, it's affecting District Three Sewer. And every time they build, or what, these are, these houses, I'm gonna say twenty or more, it started affecting the drainage, the sewer, in District Three. So is it any way, and I know we can't do it tonight, but is there any way that we can go up on the fees, or do they have a fee when they tapping into the sewer line?
There is a fee. I don't know that fee offhand, but that was discussed when we were talking about the water and sewer fees. This is a different fee. This would be a cap-in fee. There are those types of fees. We could certainly look at them and whether they are where they should be, and potentially bring some type of resolution or ordinance to the council to adjust those.
And let me tell you why I say that. It's funny how everybody want to build in Hammond, because everybody else have rules in place. And by Hammond not having any rules in place, that's why everybody keep coming to Hammond that don't stay in the area, it started adding on to our problems, but I'm not planning on leaving. And so it definitely gonna affect, it definitely gonna keep affecting District Three, and it went over to Sam District, and it gonna go over to Steve District, President Kip District, Vice President Gonzalez District. So if we don't solve this now, this is something they gonna keep spearing on until it's out of control. And even though a lot of us might not be up here no more, but I'm gonna be somewhere in the building. So we need to just look into this here now while I'm up here. Let's get this here straight.
I would like to assure you that, over the last year, we've obviously made changes in building and planning, and one of the things that we've done is we've brought back these weekly meetings where planning, zoning, building, we've got the civil engineer there, we've got water and sewer, drainage, fire prevention. It's an opportunity for various city departments, when a larger project, and sometimes a smaller project comes in, that could impact our infrastructure. Everybody gets a chance to kind of weigh in. So if we see a drainage issue that might be created, for example, we're gonna advise the applicant that they need to submit a drainage plan. If they're tying into water or sewer, you know, we're gonna have someone from Water and Sewer there to advise of what the impact might be. So there is an ongoing discussion that happens now with respect to development, residential or commercial.
Okay. How long y'all been meeting?
I think we resumed those meetings last fall, so close to a year now.
Damn, that's amazing. So next time y'all have this meeting, could I please be invited, please?
They're Wednesdays. We usually start around 8:30.
Well, could I get an email or something, you know, let me know, please? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Counsel. Stanley Campbell, District One. Just one question. What type of services will we lose if this goes for a vote and doesn't pass? What type of services does this particular ordinance cover?
This is for Public Works, so that generally includes streets. Parks and grounds could be considered Public Works, water, sewer, although there are other revenues that support water and sewer. Drainage, infrastructure, those are the primary types. What you would typically think of as infrastructure project, a Public Works project, roads, drainage, water, sewer, fire hydrants, fire has a separate millage, but...
Okay, so about $596,000 will be taken from something like that?
Yes.
Okay.
Charles, you have the details of that somewhere posted on what that tax, the special tax can, you know, cover? As far as what you just said, you said, you know, water, I mean, infrastructure with capital outlay, I mean...
I don't know if we posted the details like that, but we could.
Okay. I mean, it answers a lot of questions. Everybody want to know what they're for, so I mean, just get the details of...
Sure. If this were approved tonight by the council as part of the election process, we would certainly do an information campaign, as we've done in the past, to let everyone know what exactly it is that they're voting to renew.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
New business number one.
Excuse me. An ordinance to remove and amend unused outdated definitions and to establish specific use standards for group living and care facilities within the city's Unified Development Code, UDC. The Planning and Zoning Commission hearing no opposition recommends adoption three to zero. Frankie Legault. Charles Barsha.
Yeah, this is the one we just discussed. I'm sorry, this is a different one. Let me get Frankie to come up here. This one is specifically related to group housing, group living environments. The wording is similar, but you'll see that the language here includes group living and care facilities.
This is according to group homes, and that is what we've been asked to do. When we look at groups homes in Louisiana, there are over fifty different types of group homes you can have. What we're trying to do is to specifically identify what type of group it's going to, group home it's going to be. And you will see in the definitions that there is reference to, RS is referring to Louisiana Revised Statutes. There are other references to federal laws, such as the Fair Housing Act, that prohibits discrimination for people with developmental disabilities in the housing market. So that's what we were trying to do, is to clarify what type of group homes we're gonna have, and we may add more in the future, but these look like the ones that were generally, we were getting in this area. So, and that includes, it includes a daycare and a child daycare. We also are adding a second section, a third section to that, and it's called specific use standards. And that gives you regulations for these uses, so that the planning commission or you would have the problem of, you could add more conditions to it, but these give you a basic set of conditions that you can start out with, such as, you know, compliance with state laws and so forth. These came from the general statutes that, for each of these different type of homes. So, do we have any questions? I will say, for the Fair Housing Act, I want to read this to you, okay? Because when we're talking about group homes, we're saying those for developmental disabilities. But it also says, "Current users of illegal controlled substances persons convicted for illegal manufacture or distribution of a controlled substance, sex offenders and juvenile offenders, are not considered disabled under the Fair Housing Act. By virtue of this status, the Fair Housing Act affords no protection to individuals with or without disabilities who present a direct threat to persons or property of the owners." So I wanted that to, you know, be, that is a very important thing that I think you need to be aware of.
So from my understanding, excuse me, that what you just read, that excludes...
It would exclude, yes, yes. Alcohol and drug abuse clientele, or former inmates of prisons, or correctional institutions, former parents, patients of mental illness institutions who've been found not guilty of a criminal charge by reason of insanity are excluded from that. Now, we could add that, a section like that, under that specific use standards, if you would like to add another one to that, but it is included in the federal statutes for fair housing.
If I may, I think that that's helpful to add that, because although it is the law, sometimes people go straight to this one book, and they, this is what it applies, so therefore, I'm not listed here, so I can obviously do it. So even though we're kind of repeating what is already law, this, if someone were to look at this as a workbook of what they can or cannot do, then that's helpful to know that that's not even allowed at all, under any uses.
And I'm happy to add that. I think it's a good thing to add, and we can do that, you know? It'll be number six under the group homes.
I guess, Frankie, how you doing? I got, okay, looking at everything, I mean, my, I guess my concern, definitions, cleaning that up, that all, you know, makes sense, you know, that's fine. Now, some of the concerns my district has is, you know, the RS 11, you know, a lot of these, you know, adult daycare, family childcare, you know, that's gonna be allowed now in RS 11.
Yeah, if you, well, they're not, we did not allow them in RS 11, because a lot of RS 11s have, we allowed them in 11A, but not 11, because a lot of them have regulations for the, for the thing, for the, their subdivision that disallow...
Maybe I'm reading it wrong. A residential, single-family that has RS 11 allowed uses, and it says adult daycare home must comply with section, you know, six points, and then family childcare must comply. And so RS 11, that's a lot of my district, and it's a lot of, Villa West, Timber Lane, Latto, Brandy, all that's in RS 11, so not RS 11A. So...
Right, that's all right. Those are... Those are daycare homes, not overnight.
Yeah, but I mean, still, I mean, that could, you know, I mean, I think conditional in residential settings, you know, would be a little more protected in a way, because it would have to be a conditional use.
And that's up to you?
Yeah, as opposed...
The board decides that they want to take it out? They can certainly take that out. Usually the state divides things up into small, medium, and large, and small is anywhere up to seven or eight, depending on the, on the, what use it is. And then eight or nine to sixteen is a medium, and then seventeen and above is a large. So we've tried to keep, we've, the ones that are in the single family, we've kept to the ones that are the small group.
Yeah, I mean, it's still, it still can be something.
The larger ones go into some of those other districts.
And then like MXN, I mean, that's the neighborhood, I mean, you know, you would think that would have been, some of this would have been put in, in a commercial MXC in the neighborhood, you know, you actually gonna have some neighborhoods in there housing, you got boarding house, adult daycare, personal care, you know, all these, you know, a little more, a little more advanced. I mean, I'm glad to see that, you know, in a mixed commercial setting rather than in an RS 11, but I still think that, you know, having some of these put in RS 5 and RS 8, I mean, that's majority of my district that have a lot of residential, like, neighborhood settings that have some issues.
And that's up to you. This was just staff's recommendation, so if you decided you wanted to keep that out. But remember, you do have to have, the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination on the basis of a disability in housing areas. So you can't, like, it would be conditions such as blindness, hearing impairment, mobility impairment, HIV infection, mental retardation, and it includes chronic fatigue, learning disabilities, head injuries. It includes a number of things. We do define developmental, what a developmental disability is, is one of the definitions there, which you can see, you know, what it is.
I have a lot of concerns, and my district has a lot of concerns on a lot of this being taken on, so, you know, at this time, I mean, I think this is a lot to take on, that that could have a huge impact on certain communities and neighborhoods.
I understand what you're saying. I think it's more of an impact not to have the different types of group homes defined, and not to have specific regulations that you have to go to for those group homes. It doesn't mean that you have to approve it, you could, because a lot of those are conditional uses. A conditional use, you can approve, or you can deny, or you can add more conditions to it than what we have listed here.
And what I'm reading right here, Frankie, is it's not conditional.
Mm-hmm.
Well, let's, we stick on task, RS 11, adult daycare home is allowed, would be allowed in RS 11, the sheet I'm reading, unless I got the wrong sheet. It doesn't say anything conditional on it.
And I said, I said, that was just our recommendation. If the council wants to change those, alter some of those, that's up to the members of the council, if you feel that you want to do it.
I have a question, since you brought up the Fair Housing Act. Some of these that are in single-family residential that people have some concerns with, I like that there are, so first of all, let me say, you know, like a daycare center, not even a center, a home where there's multiple children, and it's just a daycare. I think that there are plenty of people that are doing that and doing that well. The concern is that there are other types of homes that people are not doing well, and they're doing it already on our books. So I think what y'all have presented to us is a way to try and regulate this. We might need to tweak it a little bit. As to the fair housing, the single family where there's a lot of permitted, and I'm looking at your chart, has a lot of permitted. We don't obviously want to put nothing in any of that, because we're gonna violate the Fair Housing Act, right? Now, my question is, if all of those say conditional, so that every time someone wants to open a personal care home in a RS 5, which right now is permitted, if we had a conditional there, are we gonna violate the Fair Housing Act, as long as it's allowed as a condition, with conditions?
Yes. And if you want to change that to a conditional use, you certainly can.
But that's what I'm saying, that's not gonna violate the Fair Housing Act, right? If we did that?
I don't think so, no, because we are allowing it, but there are conditions on it, you know, so...
Okay.
All's not a blanket, no. Yeah, I mean, I think there's a lot to look at here, and really take our time with trying to get it right. As far as definition-wise, I mean, yeah, there is a lot of outdated definitions and cleanup. I mean, I agree there. It's a lot at one time, but I mean, you know, but I mean, it's, it's, but as far as these zonings, I mean, these residential settings, you know, we've had in the past, a lot of concern residents in different areas before your time here, and it's, and it's, you know, at the end of the day, you know, if my district has concerns on it, that live, you know, that lived there, been there for twenty, thirty-plus years, I need to make sure that they understand and have a good understanding and feel comfortable about, you know, moving forward any of this.
As to setting conditions, is that something, so let's say, and I'm not saying to do it tonight, obviously, we're, I think, I hear that we need to work on this a little bit, but if we were to change, like, our, all the RSs to conditional, does that mean in our process, that means it comes to the council every time someone wants it? And that maybe you have to look into that.
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't know if it comes to planning, zoning, and the council, or just planning and zoning.
Yeah, that's your question. It looks like the definitions are okay. It's how do you slot them as an allowed use or a conditional use? The Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination, so you can't discriminate against someone with disabilities compared to others. So that would be in the review or the approval process.
I want to ask the conditional, though. Conditionals across the city, the same way, they go to the planning, zoning, they have to go to the council, or some are different, and some are, are they all unified conditional uses? How's that handled in the past?
I don't think that all of those conditional uses come to the council. That's within the administrative process, whether they base conditions.
Okay, that was my question. That was your question. That was what I was trying to clear up.
And as Frankie talked about, she's trying to give some life to what those conditions might be, but that doesn't preclude additional conditions based upon a particular circumstance. You just can't be discriminatory by imposing conditions on those with disabilities and those that don't.
Well, the question that was raised, that I was wanting to know as well, is just a conditional, like, nothing to do with what you were talking about just now, just, is if a conditional use has to go, if it's somewhere in our charter, written somewhere, if it goes to the planning zone, it has to go to the council, or if it just goes to the planning and zoning?
Not unless you say it does. You can say that.
Okay.
You can change the rules to have that.
Because there's, as I'm looking through, there's just all these different uses, right? Permitted use, conditional use, but we don't have anything that says what's the condition. And we've talked about this before, sometimes we set conditions, like we've done on other things, but there's nothing pointing in here to what those conditions are, correct?
Well, there are some conditions in the back. It's called specific use standards, and those came from, again, the general statutes on the specific, whatever the specific use was. So like, for the adult daycare, it has different standards than does something that's overnight. And same thing with the child daycare, it's different than some of it. So it depends on what you're doing, and then if you look at the boarding and lodging house and rooming house, which is another type of group home, you have even more conditions on that because of the idea that they have, they might have different people from different families staying in the same bedroom, and where are you gonna store your clothes, and so forth? So it depends on the type of use. In fact, in Louisiana, there's a whole lot of things that are considered group living. Dormitories are considered group living. Sorority and fraternity houses are considered group living, where if you have priests and nuns living in a joint facility, that's considered one. You know, so there are a number of things that are group homes that away, you know, it's just a large number of things that they consider group homes.
The specific, would you say this?
Specific use standards.
Yeah, that's great. I think that we don't, that is sorely lacking in our code already, all these things saying, you know, you have to have additional parking, you have to have a drop-off zone. I mean, there, this stuff, I think, is what we need badly, and we needed years ago, because it would have prevented some of the permitted uses we're having right now.
I'm planning to move some other things over into that, too, you know? This is just the beginning.
As I read that, so that would be, this project is permitted right here in this zoning if this was passed the way it is. Now, you have to meet these specific... Now, you have to meet these specific things that are already in the code. Now, if that was a conditional use, we could say, all right, we want these things that are already here, plus, we also want to see this over here. And that could be either us, or the planning and zoning, or both.
Or both.
Mm-hmm.
As I said, I mean, I just, I'm just saying, I mean, where we're at right now, majority of my district is, is, would be impacted by, by this change, especially RS eleven. Villa West is a big set of my district and that would be all changing some dynamics on this, so we would definitely need, I mean, in residential settings, a lot of this, I mean, it could be in different, different zoning. I think the real concentration part on here is where we're trying to allow some of these changes, these facilities that may have, you know, multiple people at one time.
Ms. Frankie, how you doing again? You said okay? Yeah, this me?
Yes.
Yeah, how you doing again? Ms. Frankie, we got fifteen zoning. Ten zoning will allow this. And this is my concern, I'd been to your office two times, and I asked this a question both times. Kip got three different residents, group homes, whatever name you come up with, he got three different ones, and this is what I kept asking. Why are those homes still open? And I know that was before your time, but, that's my next question. But that's the problem I'm having, and this was something that was done without, you didn't know nothing about it, huh? This was something that was done without his notice, and this is what people fail to realize. I call it a bad school, they got a bad school in Kip district where all the kids cut up, they go to their school, Crystal Street is the name of the school. And yet you got a resident right there, and what, Sunday, I passed by there Sunday, they having sewer issues, they done bust all the concrete up and all of it, and not one of those people in that house going to complain about the problem that they are having. And I said this here, I've asked you this several times, what do we need to do to get those shut down? And I'm gonna tell you why I keep asking you this, Ms. Frankie, and I'm so glad you came out. I keep asking this because I'm so scared, I'm gonna wake up in the morning, and I got three group homes in front of my house. And this is the problem that I'm having, and I heard Councilman Sam keep mentioning it. We haven't notified the residents of what the impact they're gonna have on them. And see, I know you don't have nothing to do with this, but to me, we sneaking something in here that somebody got coming down the line, that's what I'm so afraid of. It ain't gonna happen tonight, but next month, month after next, because see, when this stuff comes to us like this here, somebody have a motive behind it. And that what scares me about this here, because I definitely want to table this, but I'm looking, I just counted, fifteen zoning, and yet it's only zoned for ten, that's too many places. And I heard Sam, I'm glad he mentioned it, MXN, if you kept it in one or two zoning, and I never heard this so much in my life, Fair Housing Act, man, it's amazing that all these years, I done heard Fair Housing Act, I'm gonna say at least seven times tonight. And I know why we're using that word, it sounds good and it's a scare tactic, but in the meantime, Fair Housing Act should have been established seventy-nine years ago, but it wasn't established. And we know, everybody know how these districts set up and stuff, but we still got three houses that we can't even do nothing with, that affecting, that affecting Councilman Kip district right now, that the people complaining about it. And we still ain't done nothing about that yet, and now we opening the door for, what'd you say? I heard you use a number, seven hundred?
Right now, the door is open because it just says group homes.
Yeah.
What we're doing is saying, these are the group homes that are allowed, that we have right now. If you want to add more later on, you can, but these would be the only ones that would be allowed. As far as the ones that are existing, they are, they will probably exist unless we put something in the ordinance about non-conformances, non-conforming homes or that are non-conforming to, and give them a certain time to come into conformance.
Sorry, I'm confused, I'm confused.
Let me finish. Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. So you saying this tonight, Ms. Frankie, and God knows, that's, I came to you twice, and I was looking for you to give me an answer, because if these three done snuck in Kip district, and one of them used to be Curtis Wilson, that was the first one I heard about that they had over there, and the community was letting me know about it. And now, two more done snuck over there, one on Clinton Court, and I passed by there, I saw all three of them, and this was before your time. We have so many issues in the building permit office, how did they sneak in there without President Kip knowing? And see, that's what I worry about, because I see three people approved of it, but this something, and I said this the other day, each council person, I don't know if they did, should have been coming to your office for, to get a clear example, a clear understanding of what's this about, because right now, from each time I went to your office, honestly, I'm still lost. And I'm so afraid that we don't have enough information on this here to even vote on this. And I respect everything you did and everything you put into it, but I say this here, this not gonna affect Ms. Lisa, this not gonna affect Sam, but it gonna affect me. I don't own the whole block, I don't own the whole community, so I don't know what the person gonna do next door. That's what I'm afraid of, and so by this, I'm just saying, just stay in the building permit office. There's so much stuff getting passed over there that we wake up in the morning time, and you got fifteen people standing across the street from you, you got six people standing across the street from you. And I heard you, whether they on dope, whether they done rape people, whatever they done done, it gonna affect the communities, because see, it's real quiet right now. A lot of our communities, I'm gonna say my community, we don't have no overlay, so you can't throw these in the overlays area, but by my, by my community not having an overlay district, we're not protected whatsoever. So it gonna, it gonna, it gonna have a big impact on District Three. And that's what I see, because what we gonna have now, tonight, we done opened the door for companies, individuals start buying these houses in these poor communities, and it gonna affect these poor communities, these poor communities gonna stay poor, the people that's around, that's hearing this, they gonna start to get rich, the poor communities gonna start to have dope, the poor community gonna start to have alcohol, everything wrong with the poor community, fentanyl, every problem we having now, it gonna increase by sixty, eighty, ninety percent. That's what I'm concerned about. And so, yes, I tell everybody, I'm very passionate when it come to District Three. I don't want to do nothing to hurt District Three, I don't want to do nothing to hurt no districts, but in the meantime, we got a real problem here, and just like the historical district, they tried to expand the historical district, and Ms. Mashburn, I remember she got up and talked about it, and the councilmen, they know what I'm talking about, you put her building a part of the historical district, but she didn't know nothing about it. And so even we looking at all this here, I got two neighbors don't even know nothing about this, I got a district don't know nothing about this, and you can't just put this in the paper because don't nobody bother newspaper. You just can't put it on the bulletin because everybody don't read the bulletin. So how could we get this here out, what everybody in the city of Hammond knows? See this here tax, I heard Mr. Charles say this here, they gonna make sure people get out and go vote for us. We need to make, we need to put this same effort, making sure everybody know about this here, because this gonna have a, this gonna have a, it gonna be an impact, and it gonna destroy District Three. And Councilman Kip, what district, District One, what district you in?
One.
It gonna destroy District One. The overlay, he protected with the overlay.
It's gonna be affecting mine too.
Well, Sam, it gonna affect us, so I know that, well, I can talk about the predominant black district, it gonna have a, it gonna have an impact, because we can't afford the houses in our district, because every time a house go up for sale, this is what I noticed, a condemned house, somebody done come in there and bought that condemned house, and Kip a witness, Crystal Street, that was a condemned house, they came in there and bought that house, fixed that house up, nobody in that community saw it coming. Now, here you just said tonight, what you can do to get it closed down or whatever, but that's what I've been asking for, for two times, what could we do to get those three houses in compliance with the city, because it affecting Kip district, it affecting the people, the resident, the residents calling the police. And see, and I don't know if you noticed or have you heard about this here, this what's going on, and see, a lot of things taking place that the administration don't know nothing about. You know, the police department know about it, but how much are they putting into it that we got a problem right here? And the problem is, these people don't even stay there, these not even voters. And we letting these people that don't vote, and I keep, I'm gonna hear it again tonight, the Fair Housing Act, so say it one more time, that now we worried about the Fair Housing Act. I wish the Fair Housing Act was in place a hundred years ago and pushed, like I'm hearing it tonight, that's what I wanted to hear. So I'm sorry about that, but, no, I can't say I'm sorry about that, I ain't sorry about that, but we gonna have a problem in our district, and that's my biggest concern.
And something else you said about the three in his district that are there, that you said, they don't comply with anything, but you said they'll probably just still stay there.
I don't know what the, what, how that was approved, or whether.
From my understanding, there wasn't no approval.
Is it, do they comply in there, are they okay to stay there?
If it was not approved, we should be able to send people out and get that, see what's going on. But it does say right now, it says group living facility, and that encompasses any sort of group living in Louisiana, which is over, like, as I said, over fifty different types. So I, I can't control it through planning, you know, I can't control the type of it unless we have regulations that specify the specific group home or group situation that we have. And so that's, this is an attempt to start clarifying what we mean by group home, so that it's limited to what we get.
Yeah, that's in the definitions.
Can we pull them completely out of RS eleven and not have a discrimination issue?
Well, I took everything.
As long as you allow it, as long as you allow, and you don't do a blanket where it's not allowed at all in the whole city of Hammond.
Homes, I think, are in thirty-three, in RS thirty-three. And RS forty has some in there, the Alzheimer's Care Unit, Residential Care Providers, Adult Residential Home is RS forty.
And we just need to work on this.
Developmental Disabilities is in RS twenty-eight, same thing for the definition of developmental disability, the Char Care Provider is in RS seventeen, so it's from varying places in the, you know, in the residential.
If I could volunteer some context for this, so this, what Frankie's up here for was largely at my request after being alerted to some group homes in Councilman Andrews' district. This was almost a year ago when we were without the city planner. We had a consultant at the time that reviewed our current ordinance that relates to group housing, group living, and what Frankie says is true, it's, it's very open-ended, it says it's group housing, but it doesn't really define that or provide regulatory authority for that. When Frankie came on, one of the first things I asked her to do was to look at that, and she's been working on this pretty much since February. This is not perfect, and we do want input from the council, and I think we're hearing a lot of your concerns, but the goal here is to, within the frameworks of city and state and federal laws and regulations, to come up with a way of regulating group housing, so that we don't have a problem with people moving into a home and having six, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve people living in the home, right? There are some federal and state laws that prohibit discrimination, this is an attempt to provide the city, this council, with regulatory authority that's within the guidelines.
Which laws are you referring to, Charles, right now?
The ones that she just referenced.
That has any dealings with not having it in some of these residential settings, residential zonings, reference to what law prohibits not having in certain, in some of these RS eleven and RS three, or any of those? What law are you referring to?
The same statutes that Frankie has referenced.
I know you referenced them, so I just figured, like, you must have knew them pretty good, because you keep referencing what is actually.
I'm just referencing the conversation that Frankie just had with the council. What she's also said is that I think she's willing to look at whether we could restrict group living in certain zonings. I think there's a question there about whether that would be potentially considered discriminatory, and that's where we're trying to be careful.
Let me ask you, this right here, this is, it keeps coming up, so the three in your district, Kip, do they comply and they, are they allowed right there, or what's the deal with them?
There's no paperwork on it.
So is, why is it, is it still going on?
Still going on, I got complaints today about one of them.
So Andre, what happens, the city is not allowed to shut those down if they do not, if they're not allowed, if they don't have any paperwork on or anything, I mean?
Well, there's got to be evidence of non-compliance, once, you know, the ones we've worked on, councilmen, there's signage or Facebook posting or some indication of non-compliance with, with the ordinances. And we've talked about getting some information, right, and some evidence of what are they doing that might be non-compliance. Once we have that, then we typically send a letter out to the owner saying, hey, look, you're not in compliance with this, this, and this because of this, this, and this, and then we engage with them with getting them in compliance or enforcing it.
So this has been going on for about ten months, so we don't have anything by now that has any evidence?
Well, see, my thing was, the whole problem was, they didn't have any paperwork to be established in the area anyway.
So if you don't have any type of occupational.
They don't have none of it.
How you, how you continue without being shut down by the city? The city is not allowed to shut that down, or do they have legal rights to do that?
I can't answer it right now, because I don't have enough information about it, about what exactly they're doing and whether that's in compliance.
The other thing too, is the ones that are the conditional use district, which are the ones which have the medium and the large occupation, if you approve it as a conditional use, you also have the right to revoke that conditional use if they are not following it. So that's another benefit of that.
Well, I think of something, I think of something like this here would have came out in Kip situation, I'm quite sure it wouldn't have passed, because look at the impact, and this, you know, and it's amazing how we still talking about this, when it's something, we see we got a lot of talking we need to do on this here, which all the city council and administration, I heard Charles say, he the one, you know, put this on your desk to talk about, and this is what I look at, and this the problem that I have, this won't even affect Charles, because Charles staying a resident that they can't do this in. And that what hurts me all the time, how different ones be talking, but it don't affect them. Michael Shaw, do you understand what we talking about? You do? Yeah. Mr. Daniel Field, you understand what we talking about? And see, if they would have been here, they would have never knew this. So just think about all the ones that's not here, and I'm up here and I'm still confused, I ain't gonna tell no story. So I know this something that I can't vote on today, tomorrow, no time until the community be involved in it. And I know, Ms. Frankie, and I told you and I say it again, that the community don't trust the city when they have to come to you all office, didn't you hear me say that? They don't trust the city. So you can't expect somebody to come to your office and say, I don't want this, I don't want that, because they scared retaliation, and this would take place in Tanspo Parish. I'm not gonna say Hammond, Tanspo Parish, so it's hard to get the community to come up here and speak. But when Steve Leon had a problem that he was for, the whole community came out and spoke against it. We even had a judge to come in here and talk about it. And the administration was real quiet, but the community wasn't quiet. But see, the black communities, we can't get that. And I'm saying this, and I'm saying it on the mic, we need help. So I heard you say about that Fair Housing Act, I keep hearing it, I told you what's, this is number seven now, so I know I'm gonna keep hearing it, we need that same Fair Housing Act for every community, and that's all I'm saying. This is something, it's too much Charles, what y'all did, and just like you put this together, it should have been talking to the council, let's get the council. Let's get the councilman involved and see what effect that they gonna have on each district.
You hit it on the head right there. You just hit it on the head, that's the problem. Get the councilman involved and since you know your own district and see how you feel and how your council. So if you would call on when some things that are like, oh, affect certain districts heavily, it'd be nice to call Councilman Weld, me, Councilman Andrews, all the Leon and Gonzalez about, about some of these issues. And they may have met with them whatnot, but this is, this is gonna affect our districts heavily. And so a conversation with us about it would, would be good. And I went to a couple of meetings, but I was trying to get with you Frankie. And I've said my concerns before with, with all this. But I, I think we have a lot of issues here and a lot of improvements to be made to clean this up so it's, it doesn't turn into worse. So I mean, I, I mean, I'd like to table this.
I have a couple of suggestions. I'm all for tabling.
Yeah.
And we're not there that. But let me, let me just say, I heard one word, one statement you made, which I think is very important for us to understand. The door is open right now. What we're trying to do is show, is close some doors in some various areas. I, as we're sitting here, I'm taking everybody, this does affect my district. Maybe some of my overlays would not be affected, but again, if fair housing, I know you don't wanna hear it again. If that was some kind of challenge, there could be. So let's, let's do this right. I appreciate your work. And what I hear today is not you asking us to vote for this. I hear you asking us, what else do you wanna see? What's wrong with I've prepared? This is a good starting block. So my suggestions to the administration, the planning department, I'd like to see that language regarding the prohibition regarding alcohol and drug use. Have that at the very top. So when someone comes to see whether they're allowed to do some type of group living, that that is immediately checked off. You don't even get to come to the city of Hammond with that. And then we'll fight that fair housing issue if we had to, okay? I'd also like to see in there potentially, and let's discuss, and the council people can have some input on this and, and give you some suggestions, is perhaps all of those RSs are conditional. There's not one single permitted use, just straight up, you get it. There's a conditional, it's gotta come whether to us, whether to the, to the zoning commission so that there's some type of regulation and the council people are aware. Maybe you put that in your language. You must advise the council first and, and apply to the council before the conditions can be set by anybody else. You know, that, that kinda gives everybody some notice of what's going on. I'd also like to see some non-conforming language in there. So anybody who's not conforming, and I'm not talking about the ones that are not actually allowed and there be, that's happening. I'm talking about ones that have maybe been there for decades and they're not, they don't have enough bathrooms or they don't have enough parking, right? We give them time that they have to be, to come into conformance with what we're passing now. I think all of those would be really good ways to, to push this forward at a slow pace that everyone could be, can, can be comfortable with, that actually shuts the door that's wide open right now. And I appreciate your work on this.
I'm gonna go back on the record again, and I've said it before, and I say it again tonight, and I'm not in the business of going back to approve something that was done wrong at the beginning with those homes that are in my neighborhood. I want them out. So I said it on the mic, the first time I brought it up, third time, fourth time we talk about it, I'm saying it again tonight. It was done wrong, I want them out. So I'm not here to give grace on that at all. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be in front of it. Because I know some of the people in the neighborhoods, they don't want it. So whatever we need to do, whatever language we need to put in with that moving forward, but I'm not going backwards with them. So whenever you ready, Andre, to set that up. I got the people ready to come in and make whatever statement you need, which I don't understand that part when the people didn't do what they were supposed to do at the beginning. But I got that, I got that.
See, I mean, yep, thank you Frankie, appreciate it. I'm glad you came though, because you were able to answer a lot of questions.
Number two. Oh, I didn't, I didn't see him, I'm sorry.
Kerry Raines, 78 Whitmore Drive. My house was the one where they were gonna do the group home across the street. We had the big thing last year. I came to the planning meeting, what, a month ago with the planning commission and Ms. Frankie was here. We were told that RS 11 and RS 11A would not have, it would totally ban any kind of group home of any kind. The lady, the representative of Woodbridge was here. She asked that question twice. And she was assured that the RS 11 and RS 11A would not be affected. None of this would affect that. Then the lady, then the lady that's HOA member, president from Whitmore, which is the subdivision, asked, repeat, came up here and asked the same question. And we were assured that RS 11, RS 11A, there would be no kind of group homes or any type of thing like that. Those would be protected. So I don't know what changed between the planning commission night and tonight, but I may be confused, but it sounds to me like it still could, there could be conditional use. And I was told, we were told that there would be no conditional use. My phone's screaming back there, people texting me.
Do you have this here sheet, sir? Come get it.
I had a sheet similar to that.
Yes, that's it.
I want you to look at it.
And I could be wrong, but now it's changed from.
Yeah. But you, but you see that RS 8?
RS, RS 11.
Yeah, you see that? See how many, see how many times that it's set up for that?
And I could be wrong, but Ms. Frankie, did you, did they not ask that particular question about RS 11 and RS 11A? Okay, so RS 11 is still showing nothing.
RS 11 does not have anything.
Okay, but we're saying conditional use, they can come for conditional use and ask you to do it? Is that what they said?
No.
Only if it's, only if there is a C in here. If it's blank, that means it cannot be in there.
Wait, wait.
If it has a P, that means permitted. The C means a conditional use.
Well, this RS 11, nothing can be put in RS 11, nothing in residential.
Well, and you got adult, adult daycare home and family childcare. Those are two that's gonna be permitted.
That's not on there.
Right here.
RS 11.
See, look, look, this is the changes, the red.
Okay, well, I didn't see the changes. I mean, we were just told, we had a few representatives from the subdivision and District 5 that were really upset about it because of what we just went through. And we were assured that that would not, it would not affect those, that RS 11 or RS 11A.
Okay, RS 11A, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. You got eight things for RS 11A.
So something changed between the planning commission and tonight?
Yeah, RS 11, adult daycare and family childcare. RS 11A is adult daycare home, family childcare, personal care home, community home.
I may be wrong.
Shelter care home, assisted living facility, group home and residential facility.
I mean, I don't live in RS 11A zone, but I live in RS 11. I was specifically asked several times. And I was told that that would not be, there would be no group homes of any type of those group homes or anything in there. So I just wanted to make that comment. Obviously, I don't know if something changed or whatever, but my phone is just about to burn up with people texting.
You gotta go to every meeting.
I try to.
Okay, okay. All right, all right, we'll look at it, because right here I was just.
Yeah, so we'll just leave that.
Okay, okay, okay.
Frankie, would you?
That's fine.
On it, I think it's a good.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. No, we'll get together and get this squared away. Yeah, that'll work. Thank you Frankie.
Stanley Campbell, District 1. First, I wanna say thanks to Ms. Frankie for showing up here today to speak on this issue. Second, if this is passed, Ms. Frankie, as recommended for the group homes, would those three in District 1, would they be grandfathered in?
No.
I don't know why they're there now.
Hold up, Frankie, Frankie. I think you're not considering that that.
No, let her talk. See, that's why I like the department here is to come. No, let her talk, no. I know that, no, but let her talk. See, that's why.
It's not even on the mic.
But I know, so we tell her come to the mic. That's why I like the department here is to come. See, they tell the truth when they up here. Yeah, let her come to the mic and say it.
When an ordinance changes and there are certain things that are in, that have been approved in the right order, they would, and it changes so that they are not in compliance with the new ordinance, they're considered non-conforming. As long as they went through the proper process for approval, then they would be, they could remain there. If we find out that there's something that they didn't do with that, we could go back and issue a citation or, or a ticket saying they did not comply with this, with cer, whatever it was. If they, if they, if they can remedy it, you know, they could, they could stay, you know? If, if, like for instance, for example, if they had, they were told that they had, could have seven people and they had 10. If they got rid of three and we could be assured of that, then they could stay. If they had gone through the process to be permitted in the first place, okay? Now, I don't know what the process was. I'd have to look back to see what time period it was, to see what ordinance was in effect. But if they did not get any permits and they were supposed to get a permit, say from the state or from the Department of Health, there are different, different ones of these homes require different regulations. Some of them require, you know, approval from the Health Department. Some have to go through the federal, there are federal regulations for certain things. And then there's Louisiana statutes for them. If those were in effect at the time and they don't meet those or don't have a license to operate, then we would have to see what would need to be done to get them into compliance. But it's possible. You know what I mean? It's possible if they're willing to go through, you know?
I guess the question I'm asking the councilman, Kip, we want to get rid of them versus trying to make bring them into compliance. How, if they don't have, they're not licensed and they didn't take the protocol to get in, can we get them removed before we go about putting this in place and grandfather them in?
We would have to look into that and see.
They're not even approved. They're not even licensed.
Give you a definite.
It probably should have already been shut down.
They're not even legal, so you can't say that then we're, we're grandfathering them in. You can't grandfather in something that actually didn't go through the process. So I get what you're saying. We have plenty of those. We have options houses, there's the hospice house. There's plenty of things that have gone through the process on the laws on the book at the time. They may get grandfathered in when we make this change. But if someone never even came to it and it's just six people living together at a drug rehab house, which is not allowed and they never had a process, they're not getting grandfathered in. That's not possible because they didn't even get permission to begin with.
Two, two different issues, two different issues right now. That's, you know, if they meet the requirements and they're grandfathering in if it changed. I mean, this here, they didn't meet the requirement, I only know why they still open and operating right now. That's more of a city issue and whatever to get it shut down or whatever they need to do. And I mean, it's been going on for a while now. I'm not familiar with it, that's in Kip's district, but it seems like it should have already been shut down.
Who determined the status, that grandfather status?
If it just meets the requirement, if it was already permitted by the city, gave them a permit to operate open, they met all the qualifications and they got open. And then they're open, they're, they're grandfathered in. If the rules changed and it, they don't meet those new requirements, they're still there from being already approved by the city.
Say, for example, you have a retail store that was approved.
Talking to Mike, Ms. Frankie, talking to Mike.
Okay. And they, now they are in an, say, industrial district and retail isn't allowed. As long as they continue to operate, they're, can, can, can continue to operate, you know, in that, that district. You know, so, but if they lapse it, if it goes for, I think it's a year without anybody in there, they lose the grandfather status, okay? And they would have to, what the next use that went in there would have to comply was whatever the current regulations are. That's kind of a clear example of it, you know?
Number two.
Pam, District 3. I have a concern with the zoning. I don't understand it all. But I would like for my councilman to say, I don't want this and it don't happen. Everything is protected with the overlays. I have grandchildren and I have children. There are certain things that are not right in our districts. In District 1, you have a lot of drug use, you have violence, you have all that stuff. District 3, the same thing, you have poor communities. I don't wanna have to move to another community. I like where I'm at. So I would like for my councilman to have the opportunity to say, no, I don't want this in our area either. And something be done about it. Too long, Councilman Kip Andrews been going through this. If something wasn't done right, I would like for him to be able to say, no, I don't want it and it's out. We need to be protected too.
Yeah.
So with that being said, why are we going back and forth if something wasn't done right? Why is it still in his community? Why?
Well, I'm gonna say this here, and I'm glad you said that, because it's, it's been almost, it's been on my stomach for a minute. The biggest problem that we're having, and now this all this has been said, our investigation need to be done at the building permit office. It keep being put off. An investigation need to be done at the building permit office. Ms. Frankie wasn't there. She don't know who said what, she don't know who filled out a letter. We don't know. Kip done been to her office several times. He don't know. So if an investigation be done to that building permit office, this wouldn't be taking place.
Well, I thought there was one being done.
I'm glad you brought that up, Kip. What's going on with the Attorney General? It's been about six months.
Every time I reach out to them, the same thing they tell me is sitting on this person's desk and getting ready to go up to, what's her name, the head attorney? We are led for her, for her signature. That's the, that's the comment I get every week that we call or send an email on it.
Yeah, you can, yeah.
On the, on the Attorney General, some of the, some of the issues that we have sent or the council has sent up there, like, just like you said, for six months, we've been waiting for answers on it. We had a case that just came here through the city council where the ordinance on alcohol, that was last month, they've got an answer on it already. So that's a little frustrating for guys like me who's been waiting for six months to actually see what comes of that. I called the Attorney General office yesterday and they said they have not accepted this case, is what I heard. And they said they, they haven't accepted this case and this case won't be accepted.
What, this one?
Um, the, the one case about the, the possible police brutality that, that was sent out there.
Okay, you talking about that?
That's a different one.
Yeah, we were talking about the building investigation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm just saying, from those two cases still haven't came back down, but yet we got one from last month.
When did you submit it, Kip, I think, how long?
That was submitted, I would say probably the end of January to beginning of February.
Okay.
And we call every week or send an email and that's the exact same answer that we keep getting.
Probably need to let, let our attorney send it, let Mr. Andre send it. Let's see how it work with him, because he can get some things moved quicker than us.
Andre, you know anything about that as far as it could take indefinite to get a, an answer from Attorney General?
It can take a while to get an opinion.
May I just say, this is serious. It's nothing to play with. We have too much going on in these districts to be allowing so much to come in. Thank you for coming in. I still feel like it's just an open case where anything gonna be coming into our communities. So it's serious to me because I wanna be protected where I'm living.
Thank you, ma'am. I smile a lot, ma'am, but I'm serious too. Yeah.
Excuse me. An ordinance to approve a request by Pharoah Lusari on behalf of High Park LLC and Edson Group Limited Partnership to annex the 35 acres of lot 1-D-1B on High Park Boulevard into the city. City's corporate limits in accordance with the survey by Andrew Fuller dated May 22, 2025. The property is to be zoned I-L and located in District 3. The Planning and Zoning Commission, hearing no opposition, recommends adoption 3 to 0. Charles, caution.
This is one that was introduced at the last council meeting. And I believe there's a speaker here tonight that can speak to more of the detail. But effectively, this is to bring in some additional property, commercial zoning off of High Park Road. I think there was a question at the last meeting about water and sewer and other city infrastructure. The, the owner of the property will need to connect to existing infrastructure that's off of High Park. If there's a speaker here, I'd invite them to come up.
Frankie Calli from Encore Development. This is an adjoining piece of property that adjoins to seven acres and a 14 acre that has been annexed previously, and this is just a continuation of the same property.
Anyone else having any questions or concerns? Councilman Wells, this is in your district.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Frankie, so far as the sewer and the water, so it's all, they got a line already out there?
That's correct, the, the land is on adjoining, on the property where this meets up to. We'll have to bring any development lines to where the city's sewer and water is already. And it's at the corner of the street.
Okay. All right, that's my only concern, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else from the council? Thank you, sir. Hammond City Council, excuse me, regular session agenda, 6:39 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilman Wells.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
At this time, I'm going to ask Pastor Andrew Jackson to please come up and give us our opening prayer.
Let us pray. Father God, we come today looking to thee, knowing that thou art God, beside thee there is no other. Oh, Heavenly Father, we want to stop right now and thank you. We thank you for all that you've done, all that you're doing, and all that you will do. Father, you say, in your word, how good and how pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity. Father, we are asking for unity right now.
Yes.
We're asking that you would bring us together right now. Father, you know the situation. Father, we're just asking that everyone would do those things that you would have them to do.
Yes.
Father, we all have been assigned an assignment, and Father, it is up to us to take that assignment and do those things that you would have us to do. Father, we ask that you would look upon this mayor, look upon this council. Go with them and stand by them, Father. Father, look upon your people, you know what's going on all over the city. Father, we, we, others have come, and they've said, but Father, we know you know.
Yes.
And we're asking that you would look and have mercy.
Yes.
In the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Jackson. At this time, I ask that all veterans, active military, please render the proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'll ask for approval of our minutes from July 22nd, 2025 meeting, please.
So moved.
Second. Councilman Wells.
I'm staying.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Final adoption of ordinance, old business number one.
Final adoption of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances regarding alcoholic beverages in city parks. Councilman Andrews.
Okay, we discussed this, as I stated, several meetings. We just discussed it a little while back in our public hearing. All of the necessary corrections that needed to be made in this particular ordinance has been set in place, and just ready to proceed moving forward with a vote. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to make a comment on this item? Anyone from the council?
This, to be clear, this is the amended, or the ordinance, it was hyperlinked, and it's, has the, the changes to it. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Amendmented, yes.
Who's second?
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
I just want to be clear on the record with this particular item, that it is stating only with the, with the sale of alcoholic beverages. It has nothing to do with the sale of any other items that are being sold in the park. So, we need to make sure we're clear on that, just because this item here approves the sale of alcohol. This particular item does not approve the sale of T-shirts, caps, cookies, cakes, or anything of that nature. Final adoption number two.
I just want to say thank you again for us working together on the revisions to that, and appreciate the work of the council and the administration. Thank you.
Thank you too, Michelle. Number two.
Final adoption of an ordinance to remove unused outdated definitions. From the City's Unified Development Code, UDC, the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing no opposition recommends adoption four to one. Charles Barsher.
To clarify, this is, this is the first ordinance that was introduced. This one just removes those roughly 18 pages of unused definitions. This is not the ordinance that deals with group housing.
Anyone from the public have any other questions or concerns on this item? Anyone from the council? I make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Number three.
Final adoption of an ordinance and the calling a special election to be held in the city of Hammond, state of Louisiana, to authorize the renewal of a special tax therein. Make an application to the State Board of Commission, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Charles Barsher.
Again, this is for the renewal of our Public Works Millage. We're asking the council to approve this, so that we can call an election and put it to the people.
Anyone else from the public on this line item? Any other questions or concerns from anyone from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
No.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
New business number one.
Final adoption of an ordinance to remove and amend unused outdated definitions and to establish specific use standards for group living and care facilities within the City's Unified Development Code, UDC. The Planning and Zoning Commission hearing no opposition recommends adoption three to zero. Charles Barsher.
This has had a lot of discussion tonight. At the pleasure of the council, if desire is to table it, so we can do some more work on it, get your input, the public input, we are up to that task.
I'm going to make a motion to table this item.
Second.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Number two.
Final adoption of an ordinance to approve a request by Pharoah Lusuri on behalf of High Park LLC and Edison Group Limited Partnership to annex the 35 acres of Lot 1-D-1-B on High Park Boulevard into the city's corporate limits in accordance with a survey by Andrew Fuller, dated May 22nd, 2025. The property is to be zoned I-L and located in District Three. The Planning and Zoning Commission hearing no opposition recommends adoption three to zero. Charles Barsher.
We're asking the council to consider approving this tonight.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I was about to ask for it.
I done got scared now.
Anyone from the public have any questions or concerns on this item? All right, we'll move forward with the vote.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Introduction of ordinance nine, resolution number one.
A resolution to accept the annual municipal water pollution prevention report from January 1st to December 31st, 2024, as required by the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality and the city's discharge permit for the southwest, South wastewater treatment plant, Nathan Levy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to present a report that we do every year. It's like an evaluation of the wastewater treatment system, and a wide variety of questions that I, I go through and talk to the folks that are, that are directly involved in the operations of the plant. And we get a score, and the score, the objective is to get the smallest numbers possible as you get rated for the things. It includes things like how, how well the plant is running, how, how much the, it's reducing the pollutants that are, that are coming into the city from the, from the, from the houses and the businesses. It includes things like how many times we've had a, had rainwater come out of our, our, our collection system and spill out into the roads, and, and a lot of things like that. It talks about the, the loading, and how we, how we handle with treating the wastewater. So, we, we do pretty good. This year, we, we scored 80, I believe, if that's what I, what the points were, 82. And our biggest challenge was the, the overflows, the, the rain overflows. We still, still working very hard to, to get those things squared away, and, and even the first part of this year, there's been some, some cleaning of the, of the lines, and getting the blockages out, and so that they no longer back up. Now, this, this report is for last year, 2024, and I'm just here late. Usually, I'm here earlier in the year, a lot of things got in the way of that, and, but here I am, here today. Does anybody have any questions about it?
Anyone from the public have any questions on this? Anyone from the council?
Okay, you're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
The report.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
I'm staying.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
And Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Resolution number two.
A resolution to approve Yellow Store, located at 310 East University Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, 70401, to obtain a alcohol permit for a convenience store. The owner is Benny Food Mart LLC. Charles Barsher.
This application's met all the requirements of the city. I believe there's a gentleman here to represent the applicant. Ask him to come up now.
Nobody's here?
Apparently not, I would ask the council to table it. Not sure what happened.
I make a motion to table.
Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Call Steve first.
Yeah, already called Steve.
Call Steve first.
Councilman Leon. Who did I call? Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Well, I put a check by his name.
Resolution number three.
A resolution approving the reappointment of Elliot Sanders to the Hammond Housing Authority Board for a five-year term, beginning June 1st, 2025, and ending May 31st, 2030. Mayor Pete Panapinto.
Mr. Sanders, this is for reappointment, is willing to serve another five years, and we're asking for your favorable, favorable consideration.
Okay. Mr. Sanders here? I just wanted to give you the opportunity, if you wanted to say anything.
Oh, no, I just, Elliot Sanders, I'm here with the Housing Authority Association, Hammond Housing Authority, and I just look to serve and, and at their pleasure, and help to make Hammond a better community.
Okay.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service. Anyone else have any questions or concerns on this?
Yeah, I have a question. Is it a state law, or something that we have in place, that he actually, or whoever had to actually serve another five years?
No, it's just people being willing to help out and serve.
Yeah, and the reason I say that, because it's nothing against that gentleman, but what it is, it's not fair for the new mayor coming in office, if you let somebody serve for five years. So, now, that mean the mayor we got in place, he actually controlling the city for another five years. And so, what sense do it make, this for the councilman now, what sense do it make for us to sit here and prove for somebody for the next five years, when it should be for the next two years, and give the next mayor in place an opportunity to pick the people that they want to serve on these boards? So, I think five years, too many years that we giving anybody to serve on these boards, if, if it's not, we not breaking no laws.
Where did the five years come from, Andre? Is that just a state statute that's the Hammond Housing, or that, did the city make the term up? Or who makes that five years, two years, three years for you?
Don't know.
Do you know, Charles?
Jennifer, are you here? Would you like to come up?
I will say, Mr. Elliot does not make decisions based on the mayor. He's an independent individual, and he makes decisions based on logic and what's good for the community.
My question wasn't, just want to make it clear, my question had nothing to do with you and your decisions or anything else, or yours. Jessica, Jennifer?
Jennifer.
Just, I was just curious, when he brought that up, where did the five years come from? Wasn't four, five, three, two, one? That's all I wanted to do, generally.
Yes, sir. They've, my name is Jennifer Brunet, I'm the Executive Director of Hammond Housing. And it has always been five-year terms, there are five board members, and they are staggered. So, every couple of years, I do have the list, if you would like me to let you know, it's not. So, this appointment would be for five years, and then, every so often, each appointment would come up. That's why there's different terms, different term dates. They're all five years, but they come up at different times. That's a requirement from HUD.
So, so is that, that, you just, so a requirement from HUD, is it five years?
It's staggering.
Oh, staggering, nothing to do with the five-year term, like, it could be three, two, one, four?
Not that I'm aware of, it's just always been that, as long as I've been associated with it.
So, let me ask you a question. Ma'am, will it, will it affect you all if we do a two-year term, start a five-year term?
Not that I'm aware of, I would probably want to check with HUD to make sure, to make that change, like I said, because that's just what it's been, and I don't like to use that, like, that's just what we keep doing, because it's always been, but I would check with them to make sure. If it's no problem with them, then I don't see that being a problem.
Yes, ma'am, because I, I don't think it's fair to the next mayor, they're going to be in charge. And that's all, nothing against you, nothing against the gentleman, but if we sit here and let the mayor do another five years, then, next thing you know, we're going to have a couple more people coming behind you all, they're going to be looking for five years. So, it's like the mayor's still running the city of Hammond, and we don't know if he going to move next year or not. So, that's all what I'm saying. I don't think it's fair to sit here and do a, a five-year term for nobody, when we know another election is coming up, and we're going to have another mayor in place. So, it's nothing against you all, and then, I'm gonna say this here for the record, I can't vote on it anyway, because I done used y'all's service, so I can't vote on it. So, I want to be fair with everybody, that the ones that can vote on it.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you.
In mind, I mean, really, it just had to do with, nothing to do with administration, just really, the five, you know, normally I see four, a lot six, and I was just kind of curious about the five, and it might be a reason, something to do with the way y'all conduct y'all's business, might have something to do with some renewals or something internally, I, I don't know, but.
Just for the record, I, I checked the state statute that governs housing authorities. There's nothing in the state statute I can find that speaks to the term. So, if, if this potentially is a HUD requirement, I would ask that we confirm that. The other point I'd like to make is that these, these nominations were recommended by, by the Hammond Housing Authority, by Ms. Brunet. So, it's not coming directly from the mayor, it's coming from the Hammond Housing Authority to the mayor for the council's consideration and confirmation.
No, no, it's nothing against her, and nothing against the mayor, but she sit there and say she would check into it and see. So, let's not twist the words up, so she don't have a problem checking into it. And I appreciate she picking her staff, that's a good thing, you know? When you know who you have in place, that's a good thing. I'd just like to say, let's not just go five years, that's all I'm saying. And she say she don't have a problem with it.
So, my question would be, would it be out of compliance to, to hold to the next meeting to get a final answer on the term, the term limit?
Are they, are they still, are they, have they expired?
Yes, they've been expired.
It would affect the next meeting.
So, you could probably just do an extension, maybe, or something pending whatever you find, maybe, something like that, just to keep them in place, if y'all want to find out about that.
Well, it, it expired in June, June 1st, so this something should have came up, not just tonight. It expired in June. up, not just tonight. It expired in June, back in June.
Okay.
So, we done skipped July.
We gotta go ahead and.
And we in August. So, it's, it's already, it's already expired. So.
And that was my oversight.
Oh, no. No, ma'am. It's, no. I'm just sitting there saying, so I don't see what two more weeks or whatever take place. I don't see what gonna hurt, in my opinion.
Jennifer, when is your next meeting?
Um, it is the twenty-fifth of this month.
Twenty-fifth. That would be the day before the next council meeting, if I'm not mistaken. And you meet monthly?
Yes.
Would you have a quorum without these two members or, or not?
There's five total. So, if the other three members can make the meeting, then we would have a quorum.
Okay.
All right. What's the pleasure of the council on this?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve. I don't have a problem with it. I mean, how many terms has he served?
Um, this would be the beginning of a second term. And the last one was to fill a vacancy that we had for quite some time because it was hard to find someone to serve.
It's very hard to find volunteers to do things. So, I, I thank you for your service. And I don't have a problem with five years.
There's also probably a learning curve, too, that, you know, a new person coming in, taking time to, to really wrap their, you know, wrap their head around the whole thing and, and also offer some, also offer some experience and history.
Yes, sir.
And I, I just want to make one more time clear. This is nothing to do with you or the gentleman here about serving. I'm glad that he wants to serve another term.
Yes, sir.
Where my, my question was, is just, you know, with the five, I mean, I think it'd be nice to know why. I, I don't, I couldn't care less either which way. But it is a good question that was raised of why is it five, four, six?
And I think that's why they do the staggered terms, because another appointment would come up during a next administration or whatever. It comes up every so often.
Okay. Anyone else from the public?
Do we have a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Five years is in statute after the first term.
Okay, thank you, sir.
It talks about local housing authorities, forty, five, thirty-two. It says the first appointed could be a one, two, three, or four-year term. But after that, each term would be a five-year term. That's what it says in statute.
That, that makes sense now. I figured it had some, something state statute related or something that, that had.
There it is. I see it.
Thank, thank you for that.
Sir, you need to run for office, man. We need somebody like you up here.
What dish again?
I'll Google.
You seconding that, Steve?
I just wanted to add one thing that the mayor did say. I don't serve that at anybody's behest. I don't serve that anybody's telling me what to do. I'm here as a, a disabled veteran. My main concern on being on this board is assisting veterans and getting them through the process, homeless veterans especially, which I did take advantage of their services at one point in time. So, I'd love to continue to serve and I'll serve as long as you all have me.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman DiViterio.
I'm staying.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
I'm staying.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Resolution number four.
A resolution approving a reappointment of Gregory Vernon on the Hammond Housing Authority Board for five-year term beginning January, beginning June first, two thousand and twenty-five and ending May thirty-first, two thousand and thirty. Mayor.
Once again, asking for approval from the council for the reappointment of Gregory Vernon.
I'd like to quickly just make a housekeeping change. The actual term should be July first, two thousand and twenty-five through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. That's a typographical error on my part. As Ms. Brunet indicated, it's staggered terms. So, his would be effective July first, two thousand and twenty-five and end June thirtieth, two thousand and thirty.
Okay. Mr. Vernon, anything you would like to say?
[inaudible].
Okay, all right. Okay. Anyone else from the public? Pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
As for the term, July first, two thousand and twenty-five to June thirtieth, two thousand and thirty.
Right.
Second.
Councilman Wells.
I'm staying.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
I'm staying.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Mr. Vernon, thank you for serving.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for being willing to serve.
Thank you.
Resolution number five.
A resolution to authorize the Hammond Regional Arts Center to sell, to serve, sell, or otherwise handle alcohol during the beer tasting event Brew's and Arts Festival held on Saturday, October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five from four PM to eight PM. The event boundaries include the Morrison Alley, Morrison Park Alley. The Brew's Arts Festival is hosted by the Hammond Regional Arts Center as a primary fundraiser for the organization. Activities include craft beer tasting, art vendors, live music, and local food vendors. Melissa.
Melissa Griffin, Executive Director of the Hammond Regional Arts Center. So, we're asking to be able to do our annual for the fifteenth year in a row, Brew's Arts Festival as a fundraiser for the arts center. I realize that there have been changes made today, but none of that is set into place yet. And we really can't wait any longer in order to have our planning with the ATC and all of our ducks in a row before October twenty-fifth. So, do you have any questions about the event or anything about our procedures or anything?
I'll just say, you guys are one of the ones that I was specifically looking to make sure that you're able to continue your event because you are tried and true, have done a good job every year. I know you guys ID and you stick to your boundaries. And that Morrison Alley is technically a park. So, I'm, I'm happy to, I'm certainly in approval of this.
Thank you.
So, you need this to pass tonight, huh?
Yeah, we've been waiting and waiting. And if there's any other procedure that I need to follow at this point moving forward, we're happy to do that. But if we can get approval just to continue, then that would be great.
Anyone else from the public on this item? Anyone else from the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
I'm staying. Resolution number six.
A resolution to grant a waiver of the City of Hammond's open container law to the Hammond Regional Arts Center during the beer tasting event Brew's Arts Festival held on Saturday, October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five from four PM to eight PM. The event boundaries include the Morrison Alley, Morrison Park Alley Way. The Brew's Arts Festival is hosted by the Hammond Regional Arts Center as a primary fundraiser for the organization. Activities include craft beer tasting, art vendors, live music, local food vendors. Melissa Griffin.
Me again. I'll try to make that shorter for you next time. So, this is just for the open container waiver.
Mm-hmm. Anyone from the public on this item? Anyone from the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
I'm staying.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Melissa.
Resolution number seven.
A resolution supporting the submission of a twenty-four thousand dollar application to the State Edward Barney Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program to purchase license plate readers for the Hammond Police Department. Charles Barsher.
This is an annual grant application that the city applies for. This year, the chief would like to apply for grant funds for license plate readers. These are the cameras that are generally placed on entrance exits to the city and they allow us to monitor traffic. I will tell you, since coming into this role as Director of Administration, I'm aware that there's a lot of vehicles that pass through Hammond. They're not necessarily coming here or, or leaving from here, but they're passing through. So, this is one way that we can help support both our own police officers and ensure the safety of our community and also work with other neighboring jurisdictions to capture suspects.
Anyone from the public on this item? Any questions or concerns from anyone from the council? I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Resolution number eight.
A resolution to purchase a Kubota KX zero-four-zero-dash-five-R-three-A excavator for a total of sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty cent. Star Equipment will be delivering, will be the delivering dealer. State contract number four-four-zero-zero-zero-two-six-zero-two-zero. Charles Barsher.
Uh, this was a piece of equipment that was in our budget. This is for the Streets Department. We're asking for the council's approval. Star Equipment is a, a local vendor.
Anyone from the public on this item? Anyone from the council?
Yes. Do Star Equipment, uh, due to, uh, due to city in Hammond, could put a tracking device on this piece of equipment?
Yes, I think we could. We, we've been putting the track, the GPS tracking on, on new vehicles. I believe we're also including equipment like this. Yes.
Because this is what I'm afraid of. Once the administration leave and these vehicles not marked or nothing else, a lot of these equipment can disappear and we won't even know about it. And I'm saying, it's, it's how important it is because we keep putting off, keep putting off, keep putting off. We need to go and do the tracking device on all the, all the vehicles. Because, and the reason I'm saying this, city workers telling me about the tracking device. And somehow, it keep, we keep putting it off, keep putting it off. And so, here go a brand-new piece of equipment, and if we don't put a tracker on it, two years from now, we ain't gonna even know the city on it. I ain't, because it gonna be, it gonna disappear.
I'm just looking at one of my cheat sheets here, and, and we have been tracking equipment. So, this, this new piece of equipment would receive a GPS tracker.
How many trackers are installed right now?
Oh, that is a good question. We, I can tell you which departments or divisions are done. Code enforcement's done, building is done, water and sewer's done, streets is done, parks and grounds is done, recreation is done. We have twelve assets such as stump grinders, lawn mowers that are done. Fire department's in progress right now. They've got about ten of those done.
And, so where does the monitor and go? Like, what devices, is it an app that y'all have? Or is it, you know, who's, who's in charge of monitoring? Or where do you go to monitor that?
Currently, it is a combination of a hardware device, the actual GPS tracker and software. I believe it's online software. Right now, I know that IT has access to it. I think we're still trying to work out who within each department or division would have access to it.
When any questions are asked, IT, it's Rick handles it.
So, if I sit here and say I saw a, a truck in Baton Rouge, so I can go to Mr. Rick and he'll tell me who was in the truck and why the truck was in Baton Rouge? That's the question I'm asking.
If the tracking device is on it, yes.
Okay. If the tracking device is on it. Okay. Thank you. That's it for me. And this was in this year budget.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Resolution number nine.
Number eight.
Yeah, eight, I'm sorry. Wait a minute. And I'm, I'm right. Resolution number nine.
Numbered. A resolution to extend the ordinance of the moratorium on the acceptance of applications and issuance of permits or approvals for off-premise signs and billboards within the City of Hammond for an additional ninety days. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes. So, this is an item that the Planning and Zoning Department, Ms. Frankie who's left, but she put a ton of work into this and, and so did Courtney. It went to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They did some good work. There was, they did pass a recommendation, but then I think there was a little confusion about what was passed. And so, we just need to give them a little more time to come up with what they are proposing to us to review on how to regulate new billboards and existing billboards within the City of Hammond.
Any questions or concerns from anyone from the public?
I'm representing Bayou Signs Outdoor, small local billboard company.
Give us your name, please.
Paxton Morrow. Before the six-month moratorium was put into place, we applied for two permits. I forget the exact amount of time, but they were in place before it was passed. We felt confidently they would be issued. Seem like they were held on to and not issued before the vote to put the moratorium in place went into effect. That's twelve-hundred C.M. Fagan Drive, one-four-zero-seven-five, Highway one-ninety West. Well, we're personally against a moratorium being in place because I think Hammond already has pretty strict regulations pertaining to billboards. We're simply asking if we can have our two permits that we originally applied for before the original moratorium went into place, if we could have those issued. Thank you.
Do you have any other ones in the city right now?
We do.
All right. How many you have in the city right now?
Four.
Four, okay.
All until we knew.
Were you issued the permits pretty quickly or?
Fairly quickly, yes, sir.
So, help me out. So, you said you had two, two permits in place before the moratorium took place, and y'all, they haven't been approved yet or what?
Yep. So, within, I forget the exact timeframe. Call it nine months before the moratorium went into place. We were approved four pretty, pretty quickly. Then we went to get two more approved and, uh, they just never got completed.
Did they meet all the requirements?
As far as we know, yes. There was one that, on one-ninety, there was an issue with another sign, like a four-by-eight sign. They thought it was maybe too close, but it was not a permitted sign. It was just a little temporary wooden post sign.
So, Charles, what's going on with this?
Well, I know there was, there was additional information that was requested on one of the signs. I'm not sure if it's the one you're referring to or the other sign. The permit applications were submitted, I want to say, the day before or the day of the original moratorium date?
A few weeks before. We may have reapplied just to see if that helped along the process because these two seem to take longer. But no, it was, it was before the.
Well, like I said, I can only speak to my understanding. The conversation I had with, I think, a representative of your company was that they were submitted right before the moratorium went into effect. So, we processed those, but once the moratorium went into effect, we can't approve them because the moratorium prohibits us from doing that.
I can get some exact dates on when we originally.
Get me some exact dates, yeah.
I know one was certainly, call it, three or four weeks before maybe. And then, one was sooner. But I just didn't, I didn't think it was the day before. Maybe a week and a half or so, but if my memory covers me correctly.
So, I wrote down the two addresses just to confirm. It's twelve-hundred C.M. Fagan and fourteen-zero-seven-five Highway one-ninety West.
One-four-zero-seven-five Highway ninety West.
So, I'll, I'll inquire with the permits department tomorrow to find out where, when, when they were entered into the system. Because it's all, it's all electronic now. So, we'll be able to see when, when the actual permit application.
I think there were some issues with, some of them seemed to not be there anymore. So, we reapplied. And we reapplied again yesterday. Just make sure you see them.
So, the moratorium, as of right now, is not in effect then?
Maybe somebody can correct me on the exact date.
Is it in effect?
It is not in effect today.
And so, when you apply for it?
Yesterday, yesterday.
Okay.
It was either yesterday or today.
Okay. So, Charles, help me on this one here. Please. I'm talking about the ones that he applied for and he didn't get. Because this is where I'm going, and this is why I'm asking this here. Every time I ask a question, it's for a reason. So, explain to me what's going on with this here. Please, Charles.
So, my understanding is that when the moratorium was being, I believe the moratorium was introduced, because it's an ordinance, at a council meeting, there were some permit applications that had been received, not just by this company, but other companies prior to the introduction. And then, there were some permit applications that were received between the introduction and the actual vote to establish the moratorium. As a policy, we agreed that we would process any applications that we received. If they could be processed and approved before the moratorium went into effect, they were. If there were questions, if it couldn't be approved before the moratorium went into effect, then they would not be approved because the moratorium would prohibit that. The same is true here. I don't know offhand the status of the applications that you may have submitted this week, if they've been approved and the moratorium was not in effect. And it's, even if it were reestablished tonight, but it was approved business day today, then they would be approved. If they were still being reviewed, if there were any questions or any information that was missing and they hadn't been approved before, I'm presuming that council will reintroduce the moratorium. But then, they would not, they would not be approved because of the moratorium.
Can I ask you to clarify? Can I ask you to clarify? You said if we applied, was it yesterday or today, if the moratorium is no longer in effect? Let's just call it yesterday. And it goes into effect tonight. Would they still be approved, being I did reapply within the appropriate window?
What we had done previously is the same thing we'd be doing here, which is if the application came in, we were going to process it. That does not mean it's approved that day. It means that there's a process involved in approving. If the moratorium goes into effect during that process, we would not approve the permit application because the moratorium would prohibit that action.
What's a typical timeframe we should expect? You know, we can go back in our history and see when we applied, when we approved in the past, but is there an average?
What typically happens with any type of building permit, this is a sign permit, but it falls under the same umbrella, is we'll have our building inspectors go out and, you know, evaluate the site, make sure that it is in compliance. Like I said, I know there were some questions about one of these signs. I don't remember offhand which one. There's a process. I mean, I can't give you an exact number of days. It depends on when the permit application is received, who's available to go out and do the inspection. We're not trying to delay anything. We're trying to process things. Yeah, I mean, I would think anywhere from a few days to a week to go through that process, depending upon, you know, what's going on in the Building Department at that time.
And let me say also, under the moratorium, there is a variance procedure. So if you believe that there's a undue hardship, special circumstances, if the sign or the billboard is in the public interest of that area and will not disturb the character of the neighborhood, or if there's a legal right to proceed, you can request a variance. But you've got to meet those conditions. And that's going to be in the ordinance that's hyperland.
Yes, sir, we've come across those in different jurisdictions in the past. And it's just been a tough criteria to meet all of those typically.
Understood. I just wanted to point that out to you.
Thank you.
Yeah. So what the purpose of we putting this here? What the purpose of we asking for more time on this? That's my question.
So the Planning and Zoning has, Ms. Frankie drafted quite a few. She did a whole study. She went and mapped every billboard in the city. So there was something to go off there. She looked at other jurisdictions, and then she looked at our rules, and she made some suggestions to Planning and Zoning. They took quite a few months of reviewing her suggestions. And as I understand, I wasn't there, I was out of town. They passed something, and then some of the commission members were unsure that what they passed was what they had understood they were voting for. Don't hold me to that. That's what I heard, because again, I wasn't there. So instead of bringing that to us to vote on, because there were some things that were not clarified at Planning and Zoning, I want to give them more time to look at it again and so they can clarify their recommendation to us.
So I think I got two problems here. He didn't already fill out his application. And I don't know, was it approved of or not? But what's the process and what's the holdup on that, what he did before we put the moratorium in effect?
So my understanding is with the previous two applications that were received, they were received, like I said, my understanding was like a day or two before the moratorium went into effect. And so they were not, they could not be approved before the moratorium went to effect. So that's why those were not processed to permit. I don't know the status of the two more recent permit applications that were submitted.
Same billboards, just reapplied.
Yeah, so I will find out about those tomorrow. I don't know if the direction that we gave, that I gave, I'll take the responsibility here. The direction I gave to our Building Department staff, our permitting staff, was if we receive a permit application for a billboard, process it. If we're able to process it to approval before the moratorium is reapproved, if it's reapproved, it's approved. If the moratorium goes into effect before we can process it to a permit, to approval, then it would not be approved because the moratorium would prevent it.
I just want to ask one question, just to clarify, because I keep going back and forth. Both of y'all should know this answer. You applied, he's administrator, so you have four billboards right now in the City of Hammond?
Yes, sir.
Active up in place. How long did it take to get those permits approved when you applied for them?
It was over six months ago, but that seemed to be accurate. A couple of days to a week.
So you're saying one to two days, or one?
No, I wouldn't say one to two days.
Okay.
Call it roughly five business days?
About five, a week, pretty much per one, okay. When you applied for the two, is it two or three that you, two? Before the moratorium, was it a week? Or was it a two-week before the moratorium was introduced?
Be certain that one was over a week, but the second one could have been the week before.
Okay.
So Mr. Andre, could you help us out on this here, please? So look, he applied for these, to put these signs up. And now the moratorium, look like we about to vote on it tonight. So by him putting the application in, will it affect him? Can he still do it, or he can't do it once we vote on this?
He would not. So it prohibits the approval. So if someone submits an application, if it's in process and has not been approved, then it would be covered by the moratorium.
Okay.
His recourse would be to request the variance that's allowed under a moratorium for special circumstances, unique hardships. That would be his recourse.
Okay, but the ones that he, the application that he put in before we even come up with a moratorium, so that shouldn't affect him?
Now, if he's already got approvals before a moratorium was in place, then he keeps his approvals. If he submitted an application that did not get an approval, then the moratorium's in place, and that would affect that application. He'd have to have an approval while the moratorium is not in place.
Okay, that being said, use me for an example. If I was doing something and somebody at the city didn't like me, it wouldn't get approved, whether they vote on it today or next month. That's what I be talking about. You know, I heard the word fair housing. I've been hearing that a whole lot. And see, and I'm saying this here, and I don't know this gentleman from nobody and from nobody else that stand before me. But what I'm saying, see, that's why I talk about fair. You know, let's be fair to everybody because, see, I see what's going on, and we really covering up for one company. And nobody in here, be honest with you, I got my cousin in here. He's a contractor. He's not the only contractor in Hammond. He have to compete with other folk. Sam is a, what you do? Yeah, he's a broker. He's not the only broker in Hammond. Stanley do something. And what I'm saying is, it's like we working for one person. That's what I don't like. And that's why this moratorium, we talking about it, but it never been talked about before. And I'm gonna say this here, why I'm here. We used, we put a big sign up. We used a sign. And we used a sign this year. And it's a big price difference. So if we keep dealing with one person, he gonna control Hammond, and he gonna control everybody that run for office. That's what I'm afraid of. So we not, we closing the door. This man said he was small. They're a small company. We closing the door for the small people, but the big people, the ones keep eating. That's what I talk about all the time. The rich keep getting richer. The poor keep getting poor. So no, I'm against this. And I can say it on record because why we doing this all of a sudden when we ain't never had, I ain't never heard nobody in my district complain about a sign? Nobody. So why all of a sudden we worried about big signs being in the City of Hammond? So that's my biggest concern. The next meeting they have, I'm gonna make sure I attend it because, you know, it's something going on. Like, again, I'm gonna say it again, I smell a rat.
Did you run other question? Did you get any kind of response from them, like, that wasn't in compliance or anything? Like, when you submitted a week, a week and a half?
In our office, who was handling the direct communication. But the only thing we ever, I remember hearing was that there was another sign close by to one of them, which is, it is a not, not a permitted sign. It seems like a temporary wooden post sign, which wouldn't affect spacing requirements.
Yeah, let me make a couple of things clear. This, I brought this on behalf of people who have complained about an influx of a bunch of signs. So someone complained to me, and so I asked the building permit to tell me how many sign permits did we have in nine months or a year? I don't remember what I asked for. And it was like nine. All of a sudden, nine signs went up, or some number like that. That seemed very high. So I said, okay, well, what are our rules on that? And I appreciate you don't think that they're, you appreciate that they're kind of difficult. When I read them, I was like, wow, you can just throw up a sign with almost anything you want. Now, you guys are doing big, giant digital billboard signs. Y'all have footing things. It's a little bit different. But if I wanted to stick a post in the ground and put a big old sign up, there's very, very, very limited restrictions in off-premises signs, as the code said. Hold on. And so I said, well, let's look at this. I don't love billboards, I'll say it, I've said it before. But let's at least see what other cities are doing. So that's what I did. I met with Frankie and Courtney. I said, let's see what other cities are doing. They say, oh, Covington or Mandeville completely banned sign. You can't even put signs. Then I'm listening to the Planning and Zoning people talking, the commissioners, there's one on there is like, get rid of all of them and take the ones we have down practically. So there's varying opinions on billboards in the city. And so I thought it made a good conversation. Very, very few restrictions and requirements were in place, as I appreciate it when I compared it to other cities' off-premises billboard signs. So I thought we needed to clean it up. It had nothing to do with one company or two companies. There were two other companies, I think, that had recently put up like nine different billboard signs. You guys just said y'all did four in like six months. That's a lot. Hammond's not a big town. And we have limited highways. We need to make sure that the community looks good. I mean, that was my personal opinion. I have had lots of positive response to that idea, and I think it deserves a conversation. And as to the pending applications, I do remember that there was one where it was a follow-up question. I think that was during the time that our building inspector's office was vacant. So was someone there to even do the inspection? I don't know. I heard that might have been an issue. So I think, you know, we need to slow it down. I appreciate you guys are trying to do business, but our job is to make sure the City of Hammond is an attractive place to do business and to live. That's how I feel about it. And I think 90 more days to make sure our commissioners can give us their recommendation. Because as I appreciate it, I think what they passed said, no more ever. That's not what y'all want, and that's not what business wants. So let's go back and make sure what we get is something that is meeting everyone's needs.
We're based out of Thibodeau. We appreciate billboard regulation. I don't want it downtown. I don't want it in every block. And Covington is certainly the exception to the rule. I don't know if you'd find any other community in Louisiana with as strict a rules as Covington, just so happens to be. French Quarter, maybe.
And they're nice to drive through, though. I mean, it's a, you know.
Yeah, it depends. If you're a small business, it'd be nice to drive through. You can see your name on the board and get some advertising.
And this has nothing to do with putting a sign in front of your own business. You open your own business and you have a sign there? I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about advertising billboards. Very different.
Thank you again, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. I like what you said. Covington don't approve this, Covington don't approve that. And you're right, too. Covington don't approve that a lot of things. But guess what? Everybody from Covington come over to Hammond and do things because Covington have rules in place. So that's why they come over here. But I'm gonna say it again. That's why investigation need to be made in that building permit office. Because of things like this take place, and it really affect, it affect us. It affect the community. Our investigation need to be done on the building permit office because Councilman Gonzalez said she don't think a building official was in place at the time. So if a building official wasn't in place, you can't get no sign approved. So thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez, for your input. We got an issue because that, we still ain't investigating that building permit office.
Anyone else on this item? Pleasure to counsel.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
No.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Resolution number 10?
Resolution authorizing the Hammond Police Department to purchase 70 Dell rugged 5430 laptops using Louisiana State Contract Number 4400028252 in the amount of $84,316.40. Charles Barsher.
First, I want to make mention that this is coming completely out of the Police Department's budget. As you may recall, during the budgeting process, we're in the process of having to upgrade all of our Windows computers. They currently cannot run the latest version of Windows. Most of these were purchased around 2014. So we've gotten about, you know, 10 and a half years out of them. I can't speak to the exact age of most of these laptops. They're probably newer than that in most cases. But again, the idea here is that the Police Department is also trying to upgrade their laptops to the latest Windows version. It's very common in police departments to have a rugged laptop. It helps it withstand the motion and vibration in the patrol unit. So we're asking for the Council's approval. Again, the funds are going to come completely out of the Police Department's budget.
And Charles, we need to make one correction on this billing. Marcus McMillan is no longer with the city, and it's showing that it's shipped to Marcus McMillan. So I just want to put that on the record.
I know that, I believe Rick requested the quote. They probably pulled old contact information in Dell's system. We'll make sure that gets updated. Thank you for calling that to attention.
Anyone from the public on this item? Any questions or concerns from anyone on the council? I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
How could I make sure the computers don't come up missing?
Councilman Wells?
Abstain.
Councilman Diveterio?
Yeah, aye.
All right. At this time, I make a motion to make amendment into our agenda due to the fact that the council reports and mayor reports were left off the original agenda. I'd like to make a motion to make amendment to add this report section into our agenda.
Second.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
How was it left on?
Lisa Dunn, she left that thing, you know. Mayor, report. Mayor, report.
Backpack program for the children going back to school was very successful. We've given out over 900 backpacks. A lot of attendees there, also services from the parish and other areas, other entities from the parish itself. I want to thank everyone who volunteered to put the whole program together. Hammond West Side was the location. Jason Nala, the principal, allowed us to have it there. Melissa Stili, we thank her as well, and so many volunteers that helped out. So very successful. Remember, school is in, and I thank everyone who's been adhering to the the speed signs and limits in front of the school systems. But also remember those buses are dropping and picking up children on the road, so please pay attention, and thank you very much for that.
Any council reports?
Yeah, I got some. I have a little issue and misunderstanding and want some clarity and confirmation on code enforcement right now. I have an issue with a part of my district that continues to have the same issues, and I'm tired of wasting and repeating my time on the same issues over and over and the same excuses over and over. Several years ago, I think it was, shoot, probably four or five years ago, we voted on implementing a court procedure to bring some of these code enforcement issues to court to where the judge decide. Didn't we do that a while back, Andre? Okay. I want to ask just a question about this. Got a lot to say about this. So how many, how many roughly, Charles, I mean, how many cases has a city brought? And how many tickets issued fines of any kind that we've done since this has been implemented?
I don't have that information.
Or you know of any?
I I don't have that information. I don't know if Andre has any of the information. I I don't. I can I can get that information.
Well, let's make a note of that and write it down, and please get back with me this week on that. I know I've had a meeting with Andre in one meeting, and at that time, the code enforcement chief did not even realize that we had ticket fine system that we could actually implement and enforce some of these code issues that we are having throughout the city. And then so Andre informed him and all that there is, or there should be one, or I don't know if anybody's actually taken it to the next level yet or not. Did we ever get that in place when we talked at that meeting for hours of my time sitting with everybody about it several years ago?
It's in place.
Is it in place?
Yes.
Everything's squared away with it?
Yes. Now, I, the assistant city attorney handles code enforcement. So I can't answer for what efforts might be made.
Let me ask you this. Have you been involved in any issue since this has been in place, like that if guided or assisted, the fees or anything to get put forth to the next, to the court or the attorney, the other attorney?
I am aware of code enforcement issues. I'm aware of at least one pending case, but I'm not, I can't answer.
So it must not be many, or you would really know. You would really, I mean, listen, I'm not, I'm not coming at you, but I mean, if there was a few, then there, and there's a lot of code enforcement issues throughout the city. So what I'm getting at, that proves my point right there, Andre. That's not coming at you in any different way, but it's, we have a problem with that because it was taken and it was supposed to be put in place, and nothing's ever done about it. You know, the same issues keep going on these cars, and it's selective, and that's what really ticks me off the most. It's selective of what's being enforced and what's not being enforced. You know, prime example, you know, the Lincoln Park area. There's a, there's a tag car that was probably issued to probably the cleanest and the nicest looking lot homeowner that owned in in the area out of all the cars. You can't even count how many abandoned cars are scattered through that area. And one was picked out of all of them, hadn't seen one other ticket, hadn't seen many cars moved out of there. I mean, it has been going on forever. There's a, there's an auto shop, auto place that's been going on over there repairing cars, no occupation. I've rode around with the mayor before, and we, this is over a year ago, two years ago now. And he said, oh, man, that ain't, that ain't, you don't have occupation line. Still there. None's done about it, cars everywhere, drug infested everywhere. They call and tell me about it. You know, the demolition, I go on and on about the demolition. Several houses in there dilapidated, sitting there and nothing going on. There's supposed to be a list, a working list. I rode around several times, hours with department heads and code enforcement and everything. Get one, one excuse after the next, or this or that, they're working on this list. I emailed Lisa earlier this morning, I mean, earlier today, asking her about, can you please send me over the list of working list of demo and the grass cutting in the area over there? She said, there is no list. There is no list. So I'm just trying to understand what happened to the list that I've been told that that they're working on. I've driven around, they're putting these addresses down, they're writing these addresses down, putting them down, and they got a system in place? Okay, that's fine. I know there's a system. I mean, it gonna happen tomorrow or the same day. But several years, it has to start somewhere. It has to be issued, the letters have to be sent out. It has to be issued, they have to have a working list to work off of. So, you know, maybe it's a miscommunication, maybe there is a list, maybe there isn't. I I don't know. But I'm just so tired of the simple things. You can't fix everything with the simple things, the banning cars we vote on. I guess it just sounds good, but it's not being implemented. Like, we need to start somewhere. And and what I'm getting at is, it is not happening, and it shouldn't be something that should take years to do. And if they're aggressive, somebody said aggressive, we have a police department. Call the police department. They never get aggressive. Call the police department. If you got to go bring it to the judge, call Andre, ask him how to figure out how to get it to the judge and put a court date. But we got to start somewhere, and and it's not being started. I mean, I just keep hearing this and that and that and this, and it gets so tired because it's something so simple, you start somewhere. Grass, abandoned cars, and houses demoed. The houses that are just dilapidated and not living, these, you know, drug dealers and prostitution, all this stuff is taking place in there. And if we could get rid of that, those are the easy little, little spots that can help the Police Department and code enforcement, both hand in hand, and the city of Hammond. And it's the same one. I'm not talking about 100, there's a few, and you got to start somewhere. And I've yet to see documentation that has dates and times of things that have been sent out and where we've started at, working on progress. Because some of them may take six months, depending on what's going on with the title and this and that. But if it just gets talked about and doesn't actually start, the ticking time never, never starts, and it never gets in place. And it's the same, same thing over and over. Code enforcement, you know, it's, what is going on right now over there? I know we don't have, I know the head.
The list is coming at your next meeting for some houses.
Where's the list? I was told there is no list.
Yeah, I don't, that's not, can't be true. I don't know who told you that.
I mean, Lisa, who told you that? Because I asked you to send me the list.
I was told that today. I shared that with Charles because that's what I was told. I wanted to verify with him because I only can repeat what I was told. And that's what I was told, that a list was probably started by Joey Malazo, and he's not there. And so he did not know where things stood.
Can't get in the system.
So that was what I was told.
And so that's, that's the problem I have here with the communication. That should have been a simple, Lisa, you know, yes, here's a list or whatnot. And we're not talking about last month. This started last year, and so we're on the eighth month, and it takes time to get these things done. So a year, actually, the whole time, I don't, I don't think any of them really, they have one, one been tore down. I mean, and then these crews that are being paid, I mean, that I'm going out there and seeing, they called me about it, that are, the city, I think, are paying to go do it. They're not even cutting the grass right. I mean, halfway done? I mean, I'm sure we paying them, and I don't know how that contract, who's overseeing that? I mean, some of that needs to be looked at by somebody. I mean, go back behind and say, okay, you know, or they picked this up or not. And I mean, you know, it's, we're really some issues, man, and I'm getting tired of just continuing meeting with different people. And they're all nice. I have nothing bad to say about them personally. I mean, real nice. I mean, I'll tell you what, top notch. I mean, I enjoyed, you know, I enjoyed, you know, talking with Joey while he was here, and I wish him the best in retirement, you know, really good, you know, and Larry, very nice, you know? But it's going on a year, month, a whole year and a half, two, three years fly by, and it's not getting done. I just want to see the list. I want to see who's getting the grass cut, where are all these tickets? I asked, y'all ticket one, they ticketed one car to get it moved, and there's a, I'm probably lying, it's probably over 100, probably 100 throughout the deal, and I don't see one other ticket tag. And I'm glad, I'm listening. And I told the lady, I told her, listen, I'm glad they are doing their job, that's what we want to clean up. But I just kind of, I just kind of find it odd that there only one ticket was issued in that whole area in the cleanest yard over there in a car. And then all the other ones, the legal automobile place, all this stuff, drive right by it, not one, one ticket. I just, I don't understand the, the brains and the, and the thought process behind that.
If it did, it's saying it was too clean.
I guess so. I mean, I really, and I know it's, I know it sounds, but I'm just, why is it taking so long? You know anything about this, Mayor?
No one gets paid until it's inspected by the code officer who actually has the file. So they don't get paid until, if grass cutting cuts grass, they go check it out before they get paid. So they don't just randomly get paid. As far as the cars go, you know?
Are you telling them not to take them out or something? They're directed some higher up CEO? I'm just, I'm wondering, I'm trying to figure out what is, what is going on?
And I understand what Sam's saying, and I appreciate Sam bringing it up. I wasn't going to talk about it tonight, but it don't make sense for us to talk about things or vote for things. And I want my community to look like the rest of Hammond. So we worry about keeping downtown Hammond clean. Let's worry about keeping District 3 clean, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. So we need to push that more, and I feel this pain because the same thing. You know, we talk about these cars and no license plate, no insurance. A blind man can see that.
But then you worry about a sign, but then, I'm sorry, because, but then you worry about a sign, a hiring sign, that somebody's trying to business throughout the city, is trying to get employees or trying to open up and get business to keep the doors open, they'll be the first to snag one of them in a, in a week or two. I mean, come on, leave them, I mean, I don't want to see that up all day long for, for months at a time, but I mean, there's a business trying to make it throughout the city or whatnot, you know? And then you're not going to pull that up. They got 20 billboards saying the same thing down 190. It looks like garbage, and it's been there forever, and nobody says a word about it. But but then you got cars, abandoned cars, you know, that are just sitting there, driving, driving right by it. And then they want trucks? Oh, give them Dodge trucks. You can get them all code enforcement sirens, uniform, badges, whatever they want. But there's, the work's not being done.
Well, that's why investigation need to be done. Keep saying it, and nobody hear me.
And I can understand your frustration on that, especially when you take these rides. And like you say, it's all being written down, and we're going to get, you know, we got this list. So, yeah. Any other council reports?
Yes, sir, I do. I have Mr. Kevin here. He want to speak.
Good evening. Kevin Hawk, LaRonde, Louisiana. I just got a couple of questions and concerns in reference to the city vehicles being properly They got a law, they come out in 2024 about specifically any city vehicle is supposed to have its state's decal on it and all that. I know in the past, the mayor marked everything. Even when I was over communications, I had a unit that was unmarked, and it was marked. I mean, with the amount of crime in town, and it made sense back then when you did it because, you know, I mean, you buying brand new city vehicles all the time, why not mark them police presence, you know? They're going through the neighborhood, let them know it's a police car. I emailed y'all, I emailed Charles and Mr. Andre about it, and the only answer I got back from Mr. Andre was that the police chief's vehicle, he believes that he's in compliance. Well, I was trying to get an answer out of Mr. Andre, is he in compliance or not? I mean, according to this, investigative vehicles only is exempt, which then they would have a private license plate issued through the city on them. All your marked units got public plates. His vehicle, brand new vehicle's got public plate on it, but it's not marked. I just don't understand what's the purpose of not marking it? I mean, it seems like you want any and every police car marked for police presence, for people to see who they are, unless, I guess, you out roaming when you ain't supposed to be, you know?
Got them tracking devices.
I mean, the vehicle we had before this, it had, it was marked. I mean, I just don't understand why it's not marked, you know?
So Mr. Andre, what's going on with this? And I'm gonna say this, sir. Mr. Kevin sent several emails. I didn't respond to none of the emails because I wanted to see what the other councils gonna say about it. And so Mr. Kevin asked me, could he come up here? I say, yes, sir, you can come. And so I need to know because it's the chief of police who we talking about. How he get a vehicle, and it's not marked, and yet he want the world to know he the chief of police? So seem like, and I say this, saying this for anybody, anybody driving a city vehicle, there need to be a logo on there, and anytime we see a logo, lights or whatever, it help reduce crime in District 3 if we see these vehicles. And so I'd like to know what's going on.
You know, and, and a little further on that, the marked units that's running around with these HPD, say 130, 147, whatever's on there, he used to have HPD 1 on his vehicle, which is not there no more. That's just novelty license plates. That's not registered to their vehicle. If it is, I would, I would like for somebody to show me that it's registered to their vehicle. Because I worked in, I know they're not registered to the vehicle. Every one of them vehicles has got a public license plate that's registered through the state of Louisiana to the city of Hammond. Just throw the plates on the back floorboard, and you take whatever novelty plate you want and you put on there. So I mean, technically, that's a switched license plate. It's against the law. But you writing people for switched license plates every day, improper display, or whatever you want to call it. So I mean, it seems like, I mean, I've seen the same vehicle that's unmarked in town Sunday with civilians in the vehicle riding around, you know?
Well, Kevin, I mean.
Just like you said, I heard him say a while ago, how many vehicles you got the police department's got GPS on it? And if they do, is that public record? GPS public record?
Not for law enforcement vehicles.
Not for law enforcement? Okay. Because I know I requested some body cam footage a while back, and you could blatantly, don't take a rock aside, see that the body camera's been altered. It's muted, got faces blotted out, parts skipped, everything. So I asked for the audit trail of it. Well, they come back and tell me that the audit trail is not public record. How can that not be public record? If you change that video in any type of way, that should be public record. Correct?
Look, Kevin, I'm not going to get into debating, not all, I'm not debating this. I will tell you that as I explained in the email.
Well, I mean, that's why I tried to email everybody before I came up here, and I can't get no answer.
Listen, Kevin, you reason why I didn't answer you? Because it don't matter. You see the guy right there, the mayor, Pete? That's who you got to direct the question to? Because he's in charge of that. So you ask him, he's what?
This is all about the police chief, right? Is that what you get to?
No, it's not about the police chief. It's about any vehicle at the police department that's not marked that should be marked, or any city vehicle. The statute says any city vehicle, even if it's a water truck, it's got to have a city of Hammond logo on it. No, it's not. No, it's not. So do you agree that it should be marked or not? That's another thing. You got three other city administrators besides him, their units are fully marked. All I'm saying is, do you agree that it should be? Two months, three months. I mean, well, they, they, before, back when I was there, before you even got the vehicle, it was marked. They wouldn't even give it to you without it being marked. And then when I asked about it through the city council, I mean, through the city attorney, he said that, he said he believes he's in, he believes that he's in compliance, compliance with the law. So is he in compliance, not compliance? Is any other vehicles in compliance, not compliance? That's all I'm asking. I'm saying, do you believe it should be marked? Yes or no? I mean, that's just a simple question. That ain't what you said back in the day when Deval was here. When Deval was here, you told him he had them on his car. It's the truth, though. It's the truth. No, I know. I worked for the city for almost 30, 33 and a half years. Yeah. Well, thank you.
You know, the reports.
Mr. Mayor, I got a question on that. With him talking about the audit trails, is that, is that correct, that audit trails are not public? Or whoever's going to take it? I think, Andre, I think he's passing it to you.
Law enforcement stuff, any, anything with law enforcement is not automatically a public record. Only the initial reports are public record.
Okay, even if it's stated?
It's adjudicated and done, it becomes a public record. Kevin, I, I need to look at, the public records require, I'm not going to sit here and answer a bunch of hypothetical questions about things that I don't know, because I haven't been asked about it.
That's why I emailed.
You did.
So, Andre, I guess, simple question is, if somebody requests a video, and the city sends them a video and it's altered, is it public? I mean, you can alter, you can alter public record videos that were given to the public, you can alter, play with it, and then give it, give it back to somebody?
It depends. So if you've got a camera, and if that shows something in the background that could be private, then that would be altered. If what's displayed on the camera could, could deal with some investigation, could deal with something private, then that could be, it's called redacted, and that's redacted in public records.
Yes, sir.
Sounds like an injury to public records to me.
Sounds like an injury to public records to me. But Michael Showers, uh, president of the Greater Tansport Parish NAACP. And while we're on this, I just wanna make mention that, uh, in light of the information that Mr. Stanley Campbell has presented before this council regarding the Attorney General not accepting, uh, the investigation into Mr. Bobby McCaskey's, uh, incident, what is this council prepared to do? But let me just back up real quick and let me ask the mayor, has the city of Hammond finished its investigation?
My understanding is that pretty much, just like the Attorney General, it's not being pursued any further, as far as I know. Now, that gentleman that you're talking about, I'm sure if there would have been camera footage of something like you're claiming may have happened, it would have been out there. So, I'm not really sure where it, my understanding is it hasn't come to me, or any type of disciplinary action. So, I'm the last person to see any of it.
Okay, so there is no camera footage. Are we saying that as-
I talking about police officers. I'm talking about, you know, in general, the general public usually when something happens, and apparently, we're people around there. If there's camera footage, I'm sure they would put it in. That would, you know as well as I know, and that's the issue Stanley and I was talking about, about cameras. If you have them and they working, cameras tell it all, right? So, apparently, there's no footage showing what you're saying may have happened. I know the gentleman, there's two sides to every story, and then the third side, this is true, or something will say. But anyway, so it hasn't come to my desk.
Okay, so I'm asking, does the city of Hammond has in its possession, Hammond PD, have footage of what occurred that night with Mr. Bobby McCaskey?
They should have footage from the vehicles and whoever else was there on site, police officers.
Okay, because the chief-
Now, that's something that, as I said, it all comes to me last.
Okay, because the chief has alleged- The chief has said that there is camera footage. So, if the investigation has been completed, then we should have no-
We should have noted that's the case. We assuming it is. From the Attorney General's opinion that you said, they said, we're no longer pursuing. Is that what you just said?
They never sent us anything on it at all. I haven't received anything back. Right.
So, they never picked it up? So-
And they never sent any receipt back saying that they was gonna reject it or anything? Okay.
Who I would say that is probably not, on our end, the city finished. Sounds like the Attorney General is saying they're not pursuing this, from what I understood from you.
So, the Hammond PD hasn't completed an investigation in six months?
They're waiting on Attorney General's opinion, which just came in. But they never accepted it. When did you hear that, though? Just last-
Yesterday.
Oh, you just heard it?
They, they, they never picked it up.
Well, then we'll follow up. Andre with, uh, the chief.
And, 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 and so, when you follow up with the chief, when should we expect an answer whether or not this has occurred? Should we expect an answer tomorrow? Because this is important. This has been six months. This has been going on six months. And I wanna thank you, Mr. Uh, Mr. Campbell, for keeping this before the council in the way that you have. This has been going on for six months. And let me just say, it has been a stark contrast regarding police incidences regarding the sheriff's office and the Hammond PD. And let me just explain. In December, there was a man who died. Killed. By sheriff's deputy. The sheriff immediately released a statement. And he sent it to the state police for further investigation. Transparency, thank you. According to the chief of police, he said if civic organizations need to quit bashing the police. NAACP is the only organization that I know, civic organization, that has held the police to an account. And so, when you talk about the way the sheriff has handled things, even though he sent it to the state police, even though he released, transcribed what, what happened that night, he still met with a civic organization to discuss what happened. And he was as transparent as possible. And when the state police concluded their investigation, we concluded ours. You didn't hear about it in the media, you didn't hear about it nowhere else. That's leadership. You come to the city of Hammond, you run into stone wall, roadblocks and everything else. This has been going on six months. A man is paralyzed. From what we say is a tase. Now, find somewhere in the state of Louisiana where somebody has been tased and they're paralyzed. Find me one person in the country that a man has been tased and he's paralyzed. But yet, we keep bouncing the football around. This, this, this is going on long enough. We need answers, and we need answers tomorrow. I'll meet with you tomorrow. To get the answers from the chief, if the investigation is completed. And if it is completed, we want the body cam footage to see what happened that night. Not only that, the NAACP will be filing several public records requests, including the building permit. Oh, I, I'm not worried about, uh, getting them. We'll get them. The building permit office, the airport, we wanna know where the funds from the airport is going. We wanna know what city vehicles, what city equipment has been used in conjunction with the airport. We want a detailed report on all traffic and all vehicle stops within the last year. We want age, we want race, we want a detailed report coming from the city administration. And I wanna caution this city administration, do not injure these public records. Do not injure them. We are prepared to file ethics violations. We are prepared to file suit in federal court. This is going on long enough. I don't stand here and say nothing that I'm not prepared to back up. You have never heard me say anything that I wasn't prepared to back up. We're asking for this council. You guys have oversight. You guys have investigative responsibilities and authority. We are asking that you get a summary of a detailed report from the chief of police on any diversity recruitment efforts that he has involving hiring of police officers. He was before you guys last two weeks ago, and he stated that he wanted to hire two more police officers for downtown. Prior to that approval, we're asking that you guys get a detailed report prior to approving any funding for new hires for the chief of police. That was denied? Thank you. We are asking that this council establish a civil complaint review board. I know we had talked with the mayor six years ago about establishing that. I don't know if that was ever established, Mr. Mayor. Was it established? We're asking this council to do it. You have the ability to do it. And we will send in a detail, we will put it in writing, what, what those expectations are and what you can do. We are asking that you subpoena the chief of police to come and testify as to where we are in this investigation. You guys have that ability. You have that authority to do that. See, we can't keep going to the administration when you have the authority to do it. So, those are what we're asking, those are the things that we're asking you all to do. And we're looking for a vote on it, whether, uh, to get the chief here and get him here subpoenaed. We want it on the record. And we're prepared to go further. Any questions? Comments? Criticisms? Moans?
You just tell me what I need to do.
I'll let you know what you need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Showers.
Again, Stanley Campbell, District 1. I wanna say thank you to Mr. Showers for showing up here today and saying all the words that he just said. Mr. Mayor, it's a frustration from the community standpoint on this one case. And I know some of you feel that you're doing the most that you possibly could do, and some of the stuff that you are doing. But it seems like this is common practice where, I said when I first start coming to these meetings, that it seemed as if we just kinda wait for these things to die down and the truth never comes out. We're looking for transparency. That's the biggest thing we're looking for from not just the police, the, the police chief, but the police force. And this is not targeting just one person. Not just this one case. We want it to be a new way of doing business, not only with the council, but with the administration when it comes down to policing. Uh, I asked probably six to seven months ago about, uh, policies and procedures manuals being placed on the website. Each and every one of us, we can go up to any, any, uh, city worker out there and we'll know whether or not they're doing what they're supposed to be doing if we can look up policies and procedures. Why is that different for the police? Why can't we have access to what they're supposed, what's normal protocol for the Hammond City Police? That's done in every other municipality of our size. I've looked at most municipalities around us. They have policies and procedure manuals for their police online. Why are we running for transparency?
We don't have a problem with transparency. You just said you heard, you just heard from the Attorney General's office. This text tells me that the files have been forwarded to the FBI. The case has been forwarded to the FBI and is under investigation. So, obviously-
How long does that take?
It's to the FBI.
Mr. Mayor, uh, enough-
That's Andre question. He always deals with the FBI and AG's office.
Yeah.
So, AG said what they said. Apparently, the police chief decided to go ahead and send it to the next agency, which is the FBI. So, it's not like he's covering anything up. He's sending it to another outside agency, similar to the state police.
Okay, so, the public, how does the public know? Like, I've been coming to these meetings for the last year. This happened in February. And since that night, I asked about it that night, and has been asking about it pretty much almost every, every other meeting. And there's no answers given on it. What's the process? There, there, there's a, there's a crack in the process if we can't-
My understanding is that you spoke with this police chief, and he said that he would talk to you at any point in time. I know Mr. Showers, they had a good relationship back in the day. I don't know if you still are able to ta- talk to him and call him and speak with him. But I know he's always available for most everybody when they call to have a conversation with him. So, do you have a problem with getting in touch with the chief himself?
I have talked to the chief already, and at this point, we just need to see some results.
Right. I get that. But you are, he has taken your calls, yours as well?
The last conversation I had with the police chief was last meeting after the meeting. And that meeting didn't go as, as, as you're stating. Basically, he told me he's gonna stand behind his guys no matter what. Those are the words he said, and I told him, you know, that's, that's the wrong answer.
Well, transparency is sending it to another agency to have an outside set of eyes to look at it. And as Mike says, when are we gonna get some answers?
Exactly. So, so when was that done? Can you give us an update? When, when was that sent to the FBI?
I just heard that, just like I just heard from you, that the Attorney General told you that.
Okay. Can you, can you give us an update on that sometime this week as to when it was sent to the FBI? So, we can, so we can follow up with the FBI and-
I'll have the chief give you a call, Mike. Personally, tomorrow.
Okay. What about the policies and procedures being placed on, online? Charles told me a couple, a couple of months ago that he would get a copy of that for me. Are we still working on that?
I did, I did speak with the chief. They're in the process of updating the manual. So, I mean, I can get you, I can get you a copy of the old one.
Yeah, yeah, I'll take the current one right there.
Pardon?
I'll take a copy of the current one.
The current one is in the process of being updated.
No, I'm saying that the old one, the one that's in effect right now, if they're updating it, they're operating off of, of the old one, right?
I'd hope so.
I'm not entirely sure. I mean, I, yeah.
Yeah, whatever's active right now, I don't need the revision. Maybe we'll ask for the revision later. But can I get a copy of what they're operating off of right now? Thank you.
See that?
Thank you all.
Can I make a request? Just a request. It, it kinda stems off of what, when we know that there are people coming with these issues, it would be helpful if we could have them on the agenda. Because there's probably people who care about what we're talking about right now, and they've listened to two and a half hours and they've tuned out. So, we need these things to be on the agenda.
Okay, but you know what? I'm glad you said that. And I'm gonna call names out. When the mayor had a report, ain't none of y'all open y'all mouth. When that black man stood up there and bashed me, none of y'all said nothing. What Mr. Kevin just asked for, this man worked in law enforcement for thirty-four years for the city of Hammond. He ain't asked nobody to go crack a egg. He just asked a simple question about a decal. You ain't never respond to him. And so, and it, you know, and it's sad, and I say this, sir.
I don't have a response.
I know.
Well, he did. He said, I'm picking on the police chief.
I say she didn't respond to the email. But this the problem. Mr. Showers got up here and said nine, ten different things. And everybody up here is so quiet, but guess what? When it affect your house, then you gonna holler. Or your family. Thank you, sir, but you can't be out of order. And we need, we need help. We need help. And Mr. Mayor, I don't blame you. You, I wouldn't say nothing either. But look who it affect. It affect the black and brown community. They can't keep sitting down being quiet about it. I heard Mr. Showers say, and I didn't realize, we got a man paralyzed. Paralyzed from being tased. But see, nobody never said this, sir. And Mr. Kevin, you know this. The mayor should know this. When you tase somebody, you tase somebody in a spot where they can't get hurt. You don't tase nobody on no concrete. You don't tase nobody on no asphalt. Find the rules. Those are the rules. So, the problem is, how could a man get paralyzed from being tased and don't nobody know nothing about it? Mr. Campbell been asking about it. But look who it affect. This happened in, uh, Councilman Andrew District. Man got shot in the mouth in my district. And I'm saying these things, when will it stop? Anybody selling drugs, anybody doing anything wrong, get them off the street. If you don't have a license plate on your car, if you don't have insurance on your car, if you don't have a driving license, get them off the street. I sit here and say it a thousand times. Anybody doing something wrong, I would never sit here, stand before the law enforcement and say, man, let them go. Let them go. Mr. Kevin sit up here and asked a few things, and yet, Mr. Andre couldn't answer or didn't wanna answer. Mr. Mayor sit there and made it seem like he was picking. But this man asked for a decal. And, and Mr. Showers asked a thousand thing. So, Mr. Showers took it off the administration and put it on us. Now, what the city council gonna do about it? Or we gonna sit here and act like the mayor, like ain't nothing happened, that we can't talk about it? So, Mr. Showers put it on us, and we need answer. Because it don't just affect our community. It affect the whole city of Hammond. And just like you said, Mr. Showers, with nobody called on, when the sheriff department had that incident, when somebody got shot or killed or whatever, what he did, turned it over to the state. What the chief do? He let the city of Hammond do the investigation. And what he say? He gonna stick by his people? I don't fault him for that. Yeah, so, these things need to change. Not next week, not next month. They need to change right now, tonight. So, thank you for all speaking up and saying something. Ms. Gonzalez, you can't keep taking up because you gotta realize the position that you're trying to get to next. And everybody here, everything you say. So, watch what you say, because one thing I can say on record, I stand by everything I say, and I'm running for office again. And so, if I say something wrong, don't vote for me. But if I say something right, vote for me.
I want the public to know what we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, the public know. So, you keep covering up for the city.
In, in closing on that, uh, notation that the mayor just gave, and, because I'm confused on something, but I, I'll get clarification of it. I'm just saying publicly. My understanding that this had already been in the hands of the FBI, not just being sent. So, it's some inconsistencies here in, in the store. And I'm glad Mr. Campbell stated that about with the, uh, Attorney General's office. I'll be following up with them on tomorrow to find out why they have not even sent communication can, on saying that they rejecting anything, uh, not picking it up. But again, my understanding that this had already been with the, with the FBI.
It's just a continuum of stories. Every, every time up here, I mean, the problem is, is administration point blank. That's it. Uh, Michael Showers wants to come up here and tell, you know, address the council. I appreciate that. But at the end of the day, he serves at the pleasure of the mayor. So, the problem, the mayor right there. Kevin, I didn't respond to you and your emails, because it really don't matter. If he wants to drive around with a yellow car, no car, bicycle, you know, airplane, whatever, he can do what he wants to do. It don't matter by rules. Been going through this the whole time. No procedures in place. This is how it is. That's just not the police department. Pretty much, almost every department. Code enforcement, any department, building department, I mean, it's just loose. No, no structure, nothing. And it's been like that. And it's continued, got worse. And you can't do it up here as a council, where you're not the majority. You gotta be the majority to fix things. So, I appreciate you coming up here and, and saying it. But, you know, it's sad. It's a lot of departments. You know, I just, a list, simple as a list. This is a serious issue y'all talking about right now. But even the other issue with just the grass and the demo, it's three different stories all the time. It's, it's story it is, this and that. You don't know what's the truth. Every time you hear it, it's something else. Every time you hear it, it's something else. Mayor says he's not, they're not proceeding it anymore, pursuing it anymore, investigating now, then it changed. I mean, he said at first, he wasn't pursuing it, the GA, Attorney General, I mean, AG's not gonna pursue it. Then he said, "Well, they're not pursuing." Then at the end of the day, "Well, you know, I don't know," and now it's going FBI. So, it's just, it sounds good, I mean, but that's what's so frustrating, exhausting, just like it's exhausting with the code enforcement and cleaning things up, it's been there, the same storytelling every time. It sounds good when it comes out their mouth. Charles takes notes every week, writes notes, and I, I don't get a follow-up, you, I'll answer, I'll ask him, and he'll, he'll finally send something, but, you know, it, it's the same thing, drive around for hours with, with city employees, take notes, looks the same afterwards.
My name is Jacob. I wasn't on the channel, but I just have a question, thanks to council and the mayor. I'm one of my group.